I call the special meeting of May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three into order. Roll call, Mr. Steele.
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander, Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Lamb. Commissioner Matamani.
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Here.
Vice President Wiseman Ward.
Here.
President Bogus.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will move to our next item, which is gonna be calling for public comment on closed session items.
Thank you. Seeing none in person.
All right, and with that, we will recess this meeting and go into closed session.
There are none virtually either.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher, for catching that. Uh, we have none virtual, so we will recess into closed session. The workshop will resume at six-thirty. Thank you, Mr. Steele and staff. Uh, and with that, we will reconvene to open session. Um, and we will start with a vote on student expulsions, and then I will read the report out from closed session. I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement of one middle school student. Matter number twenty-two-two dash twenty-two-three dash number thirty-five from the district for the remainder of the spring twenty-twenty-three semester and fall twenty-twenty-three semester. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Matamani.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Vice President Wiseman Ward.
Yes.
President Bogus.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you. Uh, the report from closed session, uh, in the matter of University of San Francisco versus San Francisco Board of Education, the board by a vote of seven yeses gives authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of student A C versus S F U S D O A H case number two-zero-two-three-zero-two-zero-eight-six-eight slash S F U S D versus student A C, O A H case number two-zero-two-three-zero-four-zero-nine-five-one, the board by a vote of seven yeses gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of anticipated litigation, the board by a vote of seven yeses gave direction to the general counsel. In matter of anticipated litigation, uh, M W versus S F U S D, the board by a vote of six yeses and one recusal for Commissioner Fisher, uh, the board gives direction to general counsel. Uh, and with that, that concludes, oh, that concludes our report from closed session. Uh, and we will move into our next item, which is item D, uh, our student delegates farewell. And I'll pass it to staff to present.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mary Kate Rossi, and I have the pleasure of managing and advising the Student Advisory Council and, um, supporting the student delegates. And, uh, we, I wanted to give a, um, to honor them and give a special farewell since tonight is their last board meeting with us. Um, both Isabella Hanson and Cal Konosha will be graduating next week and, um, leaving us for college. And just wanna give, um, such a thank you for both of your hard work, um, and all of the, um, the input that you've given, both to the Student Advisory Council and here on the board. Um, and we want to, um, you know, honor what both of you will be doing, so I hope I don't get this incorrect. I've asked a million times, Cal will be going to University College London and studying politics and international relations. And Isabella will be going to the George Washington University studying political science and government. And with that, I wanna present you both with a little gift on behalf of the board.
Yeah, student delegates, okay for us to say some words, and maybe we'll give an opportunity for you to say some words. We'll start with the superintendent, and then we'll open it up to the commissioner.
Uh, thank you, President Bogus. I couldn't be more lucky to have my, as my first year of, uh, during my first year as superintendent, to have our two amazing student board delegates. Uh, you, um, helped, you know, I talked a lot about coming in, listening and learning, and you helped me, uh, learn so much about the district and what the needs of our students are. And really appreciate both of your leadership and, uh, specifically Isabel, you, um, senior in numerous different spaces, and you truly are a leader, like, you know, I was at the Student Advisory Council, um, the summit, the youth summit, and just how you were organizing things, and kids were coming up to you to know what to do. And, um, you know, and in our workshops, like, you, you, you know, you, you already are a leader, and it's just gonna grow as you leave San Francisco. Um, and Cal, um, you know, uh, both of you speak your truth, but Cal really love how you speak up, and sometimes you say things, not sometimes, many times, you say things more clearly and articulately than the rest of us up here about what, what you stand for and what we need to stand for as a district. And so, um, really, just really admire, admire how you advocate for your classmates and for what we need, you know, to do what's right in San Francisco Unified. So, thank you both for your service. You have my cell phone number, so don't hesitate to call or text if you need something, uh, cuz we're here for you to make sure you continue to be successful once you leave our district and to bring you back to help us, uh, after you, after you graduate.
Yeah, why don't we have, uh, Commissioner Fisher, we'll have a few commissioners give comments, and we'll let the student delegates, uh, give a chance to respond. Commissioner Fisher?
If both of you follow your degrees of political science into a world of politics, that gives me great hope for the future of our democracy. So, um, I've been really honored to work with you the second half of the year. Cal, I feel like I've known you for years, hearing you give comment at board meetings throughout the pandemic and on, and, um, and thank you for your voice and, um, and keep using it outside of this bubble that is San Francisco. Um, hopefully, we've trained you well, and, um, and you get to come back and train us well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Lamb?
Cal and Isabella, congratulations. Um, we're so proud of you. I remember, um, just when we both first met, um, from Cal, certainly her, hearing you through public comment and still remembering distinguishly about, um, the need around safety and health and transportation, um, and that what's already been said around really speaking your truth and really raising the issues that this district has at times failed to center our students in addressing, um, and really calling the district and all of us as board members into action. And Isabella, um, wanna recognize you for your courage and your strength. And I still remember one of your first board meetings, um, for me was a real learning time. When we talk about the importance of adults modeling what is, um, the appropriate behavior that, and support that we would want for each and every one of our young people and our students experience from the classroom to this boardroom. Um, and I've really carried, um, both of your, um, strength, commitment, and focus for young people, um, to, um, the work here on, as a body on this dais. So, I wish you both so much luck, um, and great success, and know that you've now joining a whole cadre of amazing student delegate alumni. Um, I know you all are a very special crew, so, um, congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Lamb. Uh, Vice President Wiseman Ward?
Thanks. I'll keep this short because others have said, um, all the things that I would wanna say as well. Um, I think you two are the epitome of, of leaders. Um, and leaders aren't always the loudest or the most aggressive. They're not the ones that take up necessarily the most time on the mic. Um, they're the ones that, that, that take up space when, when, when you need to and also make and create space for others, and you all have done that. Um, I hope that sooner rather than later, you come back and try to take our jobs. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be brief cuz I get to hog you since I have the, the luxury of getting to sit next to you, and I, I wanna agree with all the comments went, that went before. And sitting next to you has been a great reminder of why we're all here. And hearing your voice, um, you've often been very tough to follow because my comments has, have often come right after you, and I agree, um, hearing you speak from your experience as students at, at the district is a good reminder of why we all are here. And I just, I wish you so much luck, and it was a pleasure to be part of, um, seeing the new cohort that's interested in sitting in these seats. They're gonna have tough shoes to fill, but the, the incredible talent and, um, uh, commitment that I see in our students who sit in these seats year after year. Um, you've stepped into those seats well, and it's been a pleasure to get to know you and hear your separate voices and, um, and your own ability to navigate differences in your approach to the position. So, thank you for being leaders and someone, um, I learned a lot from in this last year. It's been a wild one.
I'll, I'll close out, and then we'll, we'll give you the floor. I just wanted to say thank you for your service. It's been an honor to serve with you. Um, really, a lot of appreciation for the perspectives and the voice that you brought forth, not just as yourself, but as student representatives and really trying to embody, um, students as a whole. Um, I appreciate the ways that you've disagreed with us, um, and called us out and tried to hold us accountable um, to do better for students and the district as a whole. Um, I'm excited for, uh, the footsteps that you're leaving for the next student delegates, um, really exemplifying what it means to be a part of this board and committed, um, to making this district a better place for everybody. So, thank you so much for your service and so much appreciation, um, and good luck in your next adventures. Do you guys wanna add anything or share anything?
I think what I've really appreciated about being student delegate is that it takes the concept of implementing or including youth voice in politics, which is, to be quite honest, often more of a buzzword and less of a meaningful action. It really makes it feel tangible to us because we know we're being listened to. I mean, in a literal sense, like, we're sitting here and you're all listening to us now. But, um, I think seeing how, also in guiding the S A C, how, um, much we're able to help incorporate student voice meaningfully into district policy. But also, I think it's just a really transformative experience in giving students the opportunity to really understand how government works, and I think, um, which helpfully for society, youth have a lot of, um, a lot of drive to create change, and we can be really riled up and really call for quick change. And I think being student delegate and seeing how the district operates and within the Brown Act and all that stuff really gives me a new appreciation for the value of incremental change. So, I thank you for that.
Yeah, um, I, I second what Cal said. I think I gained such a valuable experience sitting on the Board of Education, and it's definitely gonna be something that I take with me and carry with me throughout the rest of my life. And thank you so much for all the kind words and the hoodie. I will definitely be wearing the hoodie. Thank you.
Thank you so much, student delegates, for your service and your continued work the rest of the night. And, and, uh, with that, I believe we will go to our next item, which is, uh, advisory committee reports from our district English learner advisory committee. Uh, so we'll ask staff to come and present.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner, our President Bogus, and I just wanna welcome our District English Learner Advisory Committee. And, um, you know, I've had a chance to, uh, attend one of their meetings, and also one of their representatives is on other committees, so, uh, their voices are definitely heard and appreciated throughout the district. So, I'll turn it over to the team to present.
Hey, there we are. Good evening, Commissioners and Superintendent. Uh, my name is Johnson Horath Demden Surin, and I am an educational integration specialist. Um, and I've had the pleasure of working closely with the District English Learners Advisory Committee, D L A C, for the past five months. It is an honor to be here today to present a set of recommendations that we have developed from the annual D L A C Needs Assessment. In a way, being here today, representing the L A C and the communities we serve, is a full circle for me. As a multilingual learner myself and a first-generation immigrant, I know firsthand how crucial it is to have programs and services in place to ensure that our multilingual learners further develop their skills and pursue their dreams. To present the L A C findings and recommendations, we have, uh, D L A C parent leaders Anna Avalas, Yuan Yuan Xu, Myrna Vasquez, and from the Multilingual Pathways Department here today, uh, Miguel Dulaza and, um, Amy Gottfeld and Maggie Zao. I would like to recognize also, uh, Danielle Atlee, uh, who previously held this position and is a tenacious advocate for multilingual families in San Francisco. Her contributions continue to resonate, and she presently is supporting our families at E P C. The purpose of the D L A C is to provide guidance and advice to the Board of Education and the district staff on the needs and services, including the district goals, objectives, and programs that serve our English learner students. The development of these recommendations was a process that involved soliciting questions from our community. It, we engaged with twenty-eight school sites and four-hundred-and-thirty-four multilingual families to generate recommendations, to call for revitalizing support for strengthening family engagement at our school sites, improving communication with our parents, and extending career and college readiness information and programs for multilingual learners. And I want to take this moment to emphasize that the district's unwavering commitment to serving multilingual learners, uh, which is a quarter of our student body. Unfortunately, there is a pressing need to improve the educational outcomes for multilingual learners. As we navigate the post-pandemic world, we are eager to work collaboratively to achieve more meaningful outcomes for the students and our, and partner with our families to understand and provide multilingual support. Furthermore, D L A C emphasizes the importance of culturally informed practices and the use of data to create more nuanced understandings of the students we serve. And we hope that these recommendations will receive your serious considerations and result in meaningful actions that will support our students and multilingual families. And I would like to turn the mic over to one of our parent leaders, Anna Avalas.
Good evening, Commissioners and Superintendent. My name is Anna Avalas. Can you guys hear me? And I am a proud mother of two. One attends Daniel Webster in third grade, and my daughter is going to James Lake Middle School this fall, which I actually graduated when I was in school here. As a parent and active member of the English Language Advisory Committee, E L A C and D L A C Executive Board, I am passionate about advocating for the needs of English learner students, their families, and most, and also our teachers. I am here today to share a personal experience that highlights the importance of family engagement. I joined E L A C at my school six years ago because it is a platform for families to share their experience and ideas, and parents are welcome to make meaningful contributions to our children's education, such as provide input on the school plan for a student achievement, help organize community events, and work on other projects that had positive impact on the school climate and our students. However, we also noticed that many E L A Cs across the district are struggling to activate participation among families. The engagement, the engagement at school sites has significantly declined in the last couple of years. This is why I'm here today to present the L A C's recommendations to strengthen English language learners' family participation and engagement. To achieve this goal, we recommend that site administrators ensure appropriate steps are in place to increase attendance and participation on their site. E L A Cs, by setting goals for increased attendance, we also suggest that Department of Communications launch a campaign that emphasizes, uh, the importance of E L A Cs, and the staffing is available in the district's dominant language to support English learners advisory committees in their work. Last week, we organized a session at Daniel Webster to help parents understand the importance of L C A P and ways to increase their input. We need more, more of this outreach for parents to get their input. By working together, we've created welcoming and inclusive environment that encourages families' engagement and supports the academic success of all students. Thank you for your attention, and let's work towards a better future for our childrens. Now, I will pass it on to Yang Yang.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Yuan Yuan Xu. I am a parent. I have, I am also the D L A C Vice Chair. I have two children who go to Gordon J Lau Elementary School, who are ages ten and seven. As a parent, I know firsthand the importance of staying informed and up to date on my child's education. However, according to the D L A C Needs Assessment, only half of the respondents use ParentView to receive communication from their child's school. This is a concerning statistic that needs to be addressed. To improve communication access and effectiveness, D L A C recommends increasing ParentView usage and accessibility. This can be achieved by conducting user research to understand the needs and pain points of ParentView users with a focus on multilingual families. We also suggest implementing a user-friendly interface, providing training, and launching awareness campaigns.
现在将时间给Myrna. Thank you.
Furthermore, D L A C recommends that the Department of Technology, in collaboration with E L A C, organize accessible ParentView training sessions in the district's major languages. This is crucial to ensure that all families have access to training and can effectively use ParentView to support their children's education. As a parent, I know that having access to resources like this can make a world of difference in my ability to support my child's learning. Now, I will hand the time over to Myrna. Thank you.
Tonight, our, uh, parent leader Myrna was not able to join. On her behalf, Maggie Zao will read her statement.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Myrna Vasquez. I'm an active member of my school's E L A C, S A C, and I'm on the D L A C board and currently work for Coleman Advocates. I'm a mother of two San Francisco Unified School students. My daughter is in eleventh grade at Independent School, and my son is a fifth grader at Keflin Elementary. My daughter is passionate about helping people and planning to be a nurse after graduating from high school. As a parent, I would like to broaden E L A C involvement in the development of L C A P. I strongly believe that family engagement is crucial for the academic success of English learner students. By strengthening the participation and engagement of families in E L A Cs, we can ensure that their voices are heard and that they are active participants in decision-making process that impact our children's education. As a parent of English learner, I know how important it is to have access to college and career planning services. That is why I support the D L A C recommendations to improve these services for English learners in our district. The Office of College and Career Readiness, C C R, needs to provide English learners with tailored counseling services that cover everything from academic planning and college participations to financial aid and career exploration opportunities. We urge that district to take these actions and to report progress to D L A C to ensure that English learners are benefiting from these services. Let's work together and give our children the tools that they need to succeed in college and their careers.
Thank you, Maggie. And, uh, this slide here shows the status of the L A C recommendations. As you can see here, there are some of the actions are in progress, many are planned, and some need some follow-up. And we will be working with the respective departments to implement these, uh, recommended, uh, recommendations.
So, um, my name is Maggie Zhou. I'm the E L Family Engagement Liaison for the Chinese community, and I'm a member of the Multilingual Pathway Department. We believe that the recommendations we have present will have a positive impact on our multilingual families and English learners. It is vital that we work together to address the challenges faced by our English learners and to provide support that meet their needs. We urge the district to prioritize these recommendations and take concrete steps to implement them. We also urge the district to engage with our multilingual families and work collaboratively to ensure that their voices are heard and their needs are met. Last but not the least, I would like to express our sincere gratitude to our D L A C members represented here this evening for their ongoing advocacy of our English learner students and families. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I believe the superintendent wanted to provide some comments, and then we'll go to Commissioner Comments and Questions.
Yeah, um, uh, thank you very much for what you've shared, and just, I appreciate it. And you saw in the presentation, um, where we noted in their recommendations what's in progress and what's planned. Um, and wanna, uh, thank, uh, Jetson and the team for working with the D L A C on that because it has really stood out to me this year when the, um, advisory councils have presented that they've shared their recommendation and haven't been clear in how the district is taking it up. And while their advisory councils to the board, you ultimately, staff implements the, um, you know, the plans in the district. And so, it's important for us to recognize, uh, where we're doing it, and if we can't do something or something's still not, you know, it's just in progress to, to do that. And so, uh, you know, the, um, wanna, again, appreciate the recommendations from D L A C and, uh, share that what is noted in the presentation is also what we, we'll be sharing when we bring forward the L C A P, that we really are meaningfully, uh, taking in their, their feedback to help shape our plans for how to meet our, ultimately, how to meet our goals for student learnings.
Thank you, Superintendent. Uh, we'll go to questions from Commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Alexander, then go to Commissioner Fisher, and then we'll go to Commissioner Bogus.
Um, thank you, President Bogus, and following up, uh, Superintendent Wayne, I think, um, maybe another suggestion I would make is when we do our workshops that are linked to the goals and guardrails, to make those connections. So, for example, recommendation three here is really focused around college and career. And so, it would be, I would be really interested when we have that workshop in the fall and we're analyzing data to, to understand the data analysis for English language learners from their, you know, so that they would be given opportunity to give input in that and, and on the strategies as well, if that makes sense.
Yes. Uh, Commissioner Fisher, Commissioner Bogus, and Commissioner Lamb?
Thank you very much for being here. Um, thank you for this report, and thank you, Superintendent, for acknowledging the need to follow up on the recommendations and having a plan in place to do that. My comment is really more of just an appreciation for your work, um, your advocacy on behalf of all families. Being here on a, you know, the last couple of weeks of the school when things are so busy, thank you for being here and sharing this information and, and all the work that went into this and the survey. When we talk about one of our- When we talk about one of our guardrails being serving the whole child and another one of our guardrails being not making any decisions without stakeholder input, particularly families, input like this is critically important. So thank you so much for all you're giving to us for free. We appreciate you.
I was going to just second that and just thank you so much for your work and your commitment to the district. The work that the D LAC holds for the district is very vital because we aren't doing the best job in serving our English learner students. And we need to improve, and we really hope to see the recommendations, I think, be implemented in a realistic way in the way they haven't before. And I guess that's going to kind of lead to the question for the superintendent. I just, with the, the fear of leaving here with like deja vu without asking this, but like, how are we going to be able to implement these recommendations in ways that we kind of haven't in the past? And kind of what's different now that is going to put us in a place to not kind of fall into the same traps that we've kind of historically fell into? And how, and how is your leadership essentially gonna, I guess, ensure that? You could speak to that. So.
Yeah, I'll speak to one point in Alaska. Our director of, for next year humanities and language arts to come up, Miguel Delosa. And, you know, I think, you know, we, this is what's, again, in our process, we have our goals for student outcomes, and so universal. But we've taken a targeted approach, which include looking at our English learners. And so when we're talking about literacy, you know, we have a focused goal on supporting and improving English learners' progress in there to meet that goal. And so, so as we're developing our strategies and kind of our progress monitoring, we're going to speak to that. If Miguel, Miguel can come up and just speak a little bit more to what that actually looks like then as we're working on our literacy strategies. It was sure identified in, in our previous progress monitoring report. But when we're talking about, you know, instruction and teaching foundational skills in those areas, if you want to speak a little bit more to that, that'd be helpful.
Good evening. My name is Miguel Delosa. I always wanted to say this. You can call me Miguel Delosa or Miguel Delosa, depending on what colonizer language you want to use. So one of the things that we have learned from the D LAC is how do we going to move forward with this and have regular check-ins in the, in the, in the meetings that we have throughout the year? Every month, every three, there are ones that we meet with, with all the D LAC. And sometimes it's just the, it's just the group and sometimes it's everybody in the district. So one of the things that we are planning to do in Jensen is here with us, is how do we make sure that these recommendations are moving forward? And how do we check in with all the stakeholders and all the parents and all the staff in the district? So that's something that we're planning ahead. Regular check-ins throughout the year. One of the, the ones that is about the E LAC and the ParentView, we already have a plan. So we need to move forward with that. But we want to sit in the ground. How is the, how are the parents experimenting this? So getting more data from the school side and checking ourselves if this is making many progress.
Thank you so much for your response, your intention. I guess the last thing I would just direct to the superintendent, and maybe not for you to respond to now, but I, I just think the thing that I still would like to see and get more clarity about is how do we ensure the fidelity of our practice and intention across all of our sites? And how are we measuring that? How are we tracking that? How are we being accountable to families about that? On a classroom-to-classroom basis versus just at the district level? And so I'm hoping as we continue doing this work, we'll be able to kind of see that impact. I mean, families will really feel that their recommendations, their voice and their work is really being impactful and leading us in a better direction. Thank you so much for your responses, and we will go to Commissioner Lam.
Thank you so much to the D LAC members. I know how much time you've contributed and just how important our commitment is to you all, your children, and our families. I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, it, what is absolute a priority for this board when we approved our student outcome goals is around transparency and trust building. And that is right and square of both priority, your recommendations, one and two, around the strengthening of E L family participation, engagement, and communication access and effectiveness. And so I'm also going to be very keen to seeing how that continuous improvement is going to be reported back to the board and the superintendent around the implementation. Because we've been talking about ParentView. We've known this for years since we first implemented it, that it was a very much of a gap. So I'm happy to hear that things are already, you know, in progress to do more consistent report back. I just want to also note around that trust building and accessibility. For example, the more that this board goes into community, and we made that commitment because we acknowledge and recognize that as board members, we are an extension and representative of the values of the community. For example, just last Friday, we were at Gordon J Lau speaking about the importance around community and school safety. Also wanted to acknowledge that the district hosted the state of Hawaii around learning, a learning exchange around our newcomer programs. I want to thank staff who put in a lot of attention and time in that planning. And why does that important to D LAC? It is because it was acknowledgement and recognition of the newcomer work with our students and our families from our youngest learners to our high school students. I'm also glad to see the college and career planning exploration services and that recommendation. And just hearing directly from our students at Galileo High School just last week and how they are also ambassadors and from peer-to-peer support and learning and hearing directly from our E L D counselors at Galileo High as an example, was also spoke to the opportunities to really look at what successes we are having at individual school sites and, and how we're doing that district-wide. So I just wanted to, again, thank you for your recommendations tonight. And I think for hearing clearly as a commitment from the superintendent and the staff around that continuous improvement.
Seeing no more comments or questions from commissioners. I think at this time, we'll see if there's any public comment on this item, and then we will transition forward.
Thank you, President Bogus. I don't have any cards for in-person, but I will ask the folks on Zoom, if you care to speak to the D LAC presentation we just had, please raise your hand at this time. And can we repeat that in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas tardes. Si usted quiere hacer un comentario acerca de la presentación de D LAC, en este momento levante su mano y tendrá un hilo para hablar. Gracias. Can't finish.
Thank you. Tony?
Good evening, commissioners, President Bogus, and everyone in the audience, including Zoom. I was really moved by that very insightful presentation that the D LAC just gave. I love to hear a parent's voice, just keep on keeping on, and we're all here for our babies. Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation.
Thank you. Reonda?
So good evening, commissioners, President Bogus, and Superintendent Wayne. I am Reonda Batiste, and I am one of the APEC parent leaders, and we wanted to call in in full support of D LAC and their recommendations. D LAC has one of been one of our strongest partners in this work. And as we all know, it is not easy as parent leaders to always advocate on behalf of our babies, but they do a great job and they make it look effortless. Even with the different languages, they come together, they make sure that all communities are represented. So we ask that you stand in full support of their recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. President Bogus, I conclude the public comment.
Thank you so much to all our presenters. Thank you so much for your time. Yeah, please.
I always end with, when can we hear back from you guys? This is just accountability purposes. And so when can we be expecting a response from our recommendations?
Well, so you have in the presentation kind of the, the broad description of how we're, you know, where, what's in progress and what's planned. And I think as we approve our LCAP and, and then our, we'll, we'll provide a follow-up response of whether specifically in the LCAP and what our next steps are around them. So to be, it's just to be clear then, that happens on June twentieth. And so, you know, before the start of the next school year, then you will make sure you have like an actual documented response. Okay.
I just want to say one more thing. These parents spend their time with us, you know, in the afternoons, they spend many hours throughout these years. So please appreciate them, please listen to them, because they, they're here tonight. You know, they have kids, they have families, and they're here because they want to be heard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all again. Appreciate you so much. And with that, we will go to item F, which is our consent calendar. Can I get a motion and a second for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent? Okay, then why don't we go to a roll call vote on the consent calendar, please?
Thank you. The consent calendar, Student Delegate Hanson.
I just wanted to double check. There wasn't public comment for the consent calendar. I know we didn't ask online, just want to make sure.
Thank you for that. We do not have any in person, but I will ask if anyone on Zoom would care to speak to the consent calendar this evening, please raise your hand. Could that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Si alguien en línea quiere hacer un comentario acerca del consentimiento del calendario, por favor levante su mano. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none.
Okay, thank you so much. Roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Student Delegate Hanson.
Yes.
Thank you. Student Delegate Nostro.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Lam.
Yes.
Commissioner Matamadi.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Vice President Weisman Ward.
Yes.
President Bogus.
Yes.
Seven S.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we will transition into our workshop on student outcomes. So I think we'll maybe take two or three minutes for the board to transition from where we're seated to around the tables. And I think we'll get ready to get started. If folks have, have the desire to provide public comment after the workshop on the workshop, please submit your cards sooner than later, so we know how much public comment we'll have. And if you're online virtually, feel free to, to raise your hand. We will be making another announcement about public comment as we get towards it as well.
Thank you.
We're gonna get started in about a minute. We're gonna turn the mics on, we're gonna wait for staff to come back down and then, uh, we'll get started, so about one minute out. So I believe we are out of place where earlier, since we're meeting and restarting our math workshop. Highlighting our goals and interim goals at this time, I'm gonna pass it to the superintendent. Who's gonna kind of give us a little bit of, uh, caddy context on where we're at and how this will work.
Uh, thank you, President Bogus, and good evening again, everyone. I'm excited to be here for our next, uh, progress monitoring workshop. This time on our math goal. Um, and I just want to start off with the, a few, um, reflections. Yeah, I shared many times, uh, that a priority during my first year has been to listen and learn. And so in doing that, I've, I've, um, done that a lot this year and have received feedback on many topics. Um, and I've especially heard a lot of opinions about our approach to mathematics. And I know there are many perspective and opinions about what to do in math. But as we start this workshop, I want to be very clear on one fact that is based in our data. Our current approach to math in SFUC is not working. That's, that's not for applause, though. That is a tragedy because we want to do right by our students and we're not meeting our goals around math. And particularly, our students, especially black and brown students, are not benefiting from the current way we do math in the district. You know, and it, we have not meaningfully increased access to higher level math, and we've even limited some students. In who want to pursue and wish to accelerate, um, in math. And also through this, and in my listening and learning, I've seen we've not brought our community together around our approach to math. You know, our efforts, though well intentioned, have actually contributed to divisions in our community.
Yeah.
So.
If we ask folks in the audience to please remain silent during the presentation, so we can continue it and everyone can hear, please, thank you.
So we have a responsibility to not just bring forward a plan to meet our goals for math. But also consider how to move forward in a way that reflects one of our core values of being united. So I think just the first step is acknowledging that the status quo is not okay and we need to change. But I also want to say, as superintendent, you will always hear me highlight bright spots and where we've made progress. And our approach to math has been grounded in a vision of access and equity. And we accomplish certain objectives that I know the district had when it first changed its approach to math, such as de-tracking middle school, middle schools. Okay, but ultimately, we haven't seen the student outcomes that we want, and we've limited those acceleration opportunities for families and students. And to a place where, again, in my listening and learning, I, I hear families feel like they need to do workarounds, which creates further inequities. Rather than us working together towards our goal of equitable outcomes. And, um, you know, so as we start this progress monitoring workshop, I, I wanted to share those reflections. And, um, you know, really note that this work belongs to all of us, and so I'm confident we can make strides. And if we do this together and really come together around the goals that you've established for our students that I know we're all committed to. So with that said, what does it mean to say that we need to change our approach? Well, so now let's turn to the report. So we are, been following the same, uh, pattern that the, the, uh, are the, the, um. Format that the Council of Great City Schools has recommended, and in the report, you see the goal in the data, and that's the data I reference when I say. That our approach isn't working, because when you look at it and then our ultimate assessment, which you see on page three. Is we're significantly off track to meeting our goals. And just one particularly alarming data point is the fact that, um, our students. Uh, actually, if you look at, uh, track our students' progress across the years. Their overall, our students' progress in math declines. So whereas in language arts, fifty percent of our students meet standards in third grade, um, that number stays the same. We don't, we don't really improve on it. Here, we see actually students going down. Um, and so that, that definitely demonstrates we're on off track. Because we have a goal that's very ambitious to actually have them improve by significant amounts, uh, over the next five years. Secondly, if you go to the, to page four, so when I say that we, um, are going to look at our approach to math. Uh, and, and I actually go to page five. What, uh, what are we referring when we talk about our approach? And it really means putting everything on the table. So looking at our assessments, our instruction, our curriculum, our intervention, our course sequence. Our placement policy and the opportunities for acceleration. And, you know, really, if we're going to meet those ambitious goals and meet, you know, and particularly support our students who have not been successful in math. We need to address all of those areas. The challenge is, we're not going to do that, all of that in one year. And actually, I've appreciated the process where we produced the report. Originally, we're gonna produce the reports just three days in advance, because this isn't an action item. But, you know, then you gave feedback and said, well, we'd like to see them ahead of time, so we can really, uh, dig into them. And we got a lot of questions from you all, uh, as well as the public had an opportunity to see the report. And what I realized is, in, in our effort to share what we're doing to meet the goals. We went in some depth around like intervention and then that we're gonna do an audit and a timeline for curriculum. Uh, but didn't note what we're doing in all of these areas. And so again, not all of the areas are going to be, uh, addressed immediately. But what we laid out here that wasn't in the first draft was a timeline, so you can see where, uh, where we're going over the next five years. So in the next year, there are immediate actions that we're taking. We are implementing new interim, um, assessments. Uh, we are expanding, uh, intervention and using a research-based intervention tool that has been piloted in our schools where we've seen results. Um, and making that available, uh, district-wide, and we'll be able to track progress on that. And then, um, we're doing the instructional audit, and then we're also looking at designing our new course sequence and looking at our placement policy. We already, you know, temporarily shifted our policy, um, uh, recognizing we're going to need to do further work. And those actions will take place next year with actual recommendations for what to do with our placement policy and course sequence in the future. We, then you see, it does need to be spaced out, so like for curriculum, the chart that we had further, further down. Showed overall what we're doing with curriculum, um, yeah, in the, in the, um, in our schools. And particularly at the elementary level, we can only ask our schools to adopt so much new curriculum. Um, because we have the literacy curriculum coming, there is already commitment as a district around social studies curriculum. And then we have math curriculum that we need to look at too. I want to make two points about that. One is, again, kind of from the questions we received. We can look at, um, you know, in elementary, our teachers do teach all the subjects. In secondary, they teach by subject, uh, subject matters. So perhaps that's in.
Yeah.
Yeah, perhaps that's an area where we can, uh, accelerate that, because the math teachers aren't adopting a new language arts curriculum in middle school. Whereas in elementary school, the same teachers who adopt the literacy curriculum, adopt the, the math curriculum. The second thing, um, that I want to point out is. Impacting the student outcomes is way more than the curriculum we provide. And we actually put a little chart here from data from, uh, uh, you know, a comprehensive survey. That TNT, uh, our kind of, uh, uh, analysis TNTP did, that demonstrates, you know, what has impact on student learning. You know, and yes, you know, curriculum definitely has impact, but you can see the greatest impact are the expectations the student have, the teachers have. And our ability to teach to standards and knowing what that looks like. And that, we don't need to wait for a new curriculum to happen. And so, um, so this lays out, again, you know, we have a lot of details to work on. And particularly the changes to the course sequence and placement policies. I know people, you know, might want an answer now, what does that mean you're gonna do in middle school and high school? That's a major decision, and board has adopted a guardrail that says, for major decisions, you need to have a process where you talk to those who are impacted. And that's why it's not going to be, tonight, we're presenting, here's the plan for our new course sequence, we're gonna actually go through that process. But it's not a two-year, three-year process, it's a process that should bring recommendations for twenty-four, twenty-five and beyond. Um, then the last thing I'll say is, in these workshops, you've, uh, usually heard staff sharing. And, you know, AJ Crabbe, our coach and guide, uh, he was analyzing the last workshop and gave us feedback. Gave the board feedback about, you know, asking strategic questions, then pointed out if staff is sharing. And going over all the, the details of the implementation, you're probably more at the tactical level. And, uh, so call, you know, so the expectation is, you know, that, that, that the strategic level, the superintendent is, is leading the conversation. So again, we're new to this, I've appreciated this has been a space to try things and learn about this, and it's kind of feels open to. You know, I feel there's openness to do things differently, but that's why you're hearing from me. So we do have staff here, but very involved in this, ready to answer questions. But I know we're seeing, like, we're figuring out ourselves, what's the strategic versus a tactical versus an informative question and conversation. So I figure, I, I hope, I wanted to provide a strategic overview, rather than just recount the details of the report. Which, again, from your questions, and because it was published twelve days in advance, you've had time to look at. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to President Bogus to facilitate our, um, conversation around our math progress monitoring report.
Yeah, and I guess just to emphasize the importance of us trying to direct questions to the superintendent, uh, versus staff. So I think as much as possible, yeah, maybe, uh, why don't we start, um, with Vice President Weisman Ward, and we'll go from there.
Does this work if I go like this? A little awkward. Um, thank you, and I, I, I do want to acknowledge and recognize that this, these workshops and these monitoring reports are a new thing that we're doing. And I appreciate that, I wouldn't even call it growing pains, it's just getting used to it, and so I really appreciate the work that's gone into it. Um, especially since we're now moving at a faster pace in terms of the twelve days. So thank you, and also thank you for the, um, the updates to the report. I think, um, it really helps me get a sense of, you know, the thought process behind, um, where we're going. So I think this is, I, I think I would get a good score on this question from AJ, but we'll see. Um, I'm wondering if you can describe the reasons that you all think that the proposed actions listed on page four. In combination with the multi-year plan on page five. Make it likely that we'll meet goal two and interim goals two point one, two point two and two point three.
Um, sure, I, I, I think those.
Yeah, we'll see. Um, so, uh, I think these actions lay a foundation. So I'm going to, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna claim that these actions in the, of themselves are gonna help us meet our, um, overall goals. But I think they do two things. They lay a foundation and they help us address our interim goals. So the reason why I say they address the interim goals is, um, twofold. One is, that's why we did emphasize the expansion of the intervention. Uh, and, you know, ultimately, we know the, what we call i- in our education speak tier one, but the first teaching is what matters. Uh, but since we saw that data, uh, of students not making progress, we wanted to have. Um, we wanted to have a robust intervention, uh, resource available that we're going to. You know, monitor its implementation and provide support for it and see, you know, see how it works, um, and be able to make adjustments. Uh, the other thing is, why I say it lays the foundation, oh, no, sorry, then the other thing for improving the, um. The, uh, meeting the interim goals is we are, um, working toward, like, really wants to, I, I would say. Um, re, uh, kind of revive, uh, focus on, and like re, reconnect with the standards that need to be taught. So I say reconnect or revive, because when the Common Core standards came out, there was a, a big push to like learn and study the standards. Um, and, yeah, then as, as we say often, the pandemic happened and just a lot of things got, uh, uh. You know, a lot of things became a focus, but we really do see the need to hone in on, uh, the standards and make sure that we're working towards standards. And that's what our professional development, um, that's described in the professional learning, that's what that describes. Why I say it lays the foundation is, um, you know, particularly bringing in the assessment. Cause bringing in an interim assessment is not in and of itself going to improve, uh, instruction. In fact, you've heard me talk about, like, the interim isn't gonna drive the day-to-day instruction, but what it does do, it gives us a much more. Um, it gets, it starts to let us see progress, see where we might hone in, where there needs to be support, but also see bright spots. So, right, we've highlighted, uh, in, in kind of the follow-up one, we've highlighted there, you know, there are schools that have had success. John Muir has had success doing some work, and what you, um, you know, they improved on the S back a few years ago, then it paused. And then they went down a little, but they're still higher, but we then end up really as a system needing to wait for the S back. I mean, I've been to the school and see the incredible work they're doing in it, but some of the other pilot schools. But these interims give us a much more dynamic approach to say, oh, we're seeing some progress here. It's not necessarily like driving the day-to-day instruction, but now we know, let's ask, oh, what's going on here? That might be, that, uh, you know, might be, uh, something to learn from that we can build on in a way that our current system, um, doesn't do that. So that's, that's, that's why I think it will help in the short term, you know, help us meet those interim goals and lays the foundation for the long term. And then I guess, since this is, if anybody wants to like chime in on anything, uh, you know, if you feel there's any clarifying points, you know, we said this is superintendent conversation. Feel free to jump in, but, uh, I, I do want to acknowledge the expertise we have, uh, I have behind me.
Thank you so much for that response. I think we'll go one side of the table, and then we'll go back over, so we'll go Commissioner Sanchez.
Hey, Rick, Commissioner Weisman Ward, this is awkward. Um, all right, so one day we'll get a new sound system, hopefully. Um, speaking of the interim. Um, assessments, so when we look at our, the interim assessments for, uh, seventh grade, sixth grade. And the third grade, it looks like, um, they've gone down from. In, in every single one of those grades, they've gone down over time, and then we have these ambitious goals to, to raise them. So I want to know what th- that impact will have on our goal. Because when we made the goals, we didn't have this latest interim report for math. If you look, they, they've gone down consistently throughout those grades, and now we have a longer way to go to meet our goals for those interims.
So you're looking at, um.
So for. Yeah, the tables, if you look at, um, the third grade, they've gone from, uh, forty, is it forty-four to forty-two? And then we have a, a goal to get to fifty-four. So it's a, so it's a, it's actually a, a larger goal that we need to meet, a larger gap has to be filled. So I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that. And then my second question is, um, if we're gonna change the interim assessments. How do those play into, do we have to have a new baseline for, for interims and to make new goals?
Yeah, so, uh, let me answer your second question first. I think the, you know, when we, what, when we had worked out, when we had, uh. Worked, when we adopted the goals and guardrails, it was understood that the, um, progress monitoring wouldn't really happen until the next school year. Because, you know, we had already had our plans in place, but we, we agreed to like, start going through this process to learn. And so the, um, and, and so then there was this debate when talking, adopting the interim goals, because it's the same thing with the literacy. That, do we, do we wait till we have new assessments or do we adopt goals? So we did decide to adopt the interim goals based on our current assessment, so those interim goals may get updated based on the new assessments. And then to your first question about, um, you know, I think one of the reasons, you know, and so on table, on page six, table two. You know, one of the reasons we don't have a lot of confidence in those interim assessments is because the participation rate in them is not great. As well as the, um, as well as the, uh, correlation to the S back, right? And, you know, I think, a- as I said, these aren't the ones that are gonna drive instruction. The math milestones might continue, uh, I mean, as a formative, if teachers have found them valuable. I do want to turn to the team, because I'm not gonna say this correctly, but one of the issues has been with how the math milestones line up with what. Uh, teachers are, are teaching, right? Whereas the, the, um, assess what we're bringing in is both, is more, you know, generically standard-based and also computer adaptive. Um, you know, so we'll, we'll give a little bit better information about that, but drive that correctly, that, that explains some of the low participation rate for the math milestones.
Um, something I was curious about was, within the presentation, we're tracking two different years. For the math interim assessments for African-American students in third grade versus Latinx students in seventh grade. And I think intuitively, it would seem to me that if we were trying to sort of track where different groups are like diverging in their performance to track inequities. You'd want to do it in the same year, so I'm curious as to why specifically we're choosing to track two different years between the different, um, groups that we're focusing on.
This, yeah, uh, so, uh, this was a challenge, this has been, there's been a lot of debate among the board. And then among staff, because we developed the interim goals about taking that targeted universalism approach, like how to, um, you know. Um, you know, how to have that be reflected in our goals, and then frankly, you know, in following the, um. The, the Council of Great City Schools ensures that in what we're doing, there's a level of discipline, um, just to keep things focused. And so in the end, you know, we, uh, you know, each target, we highlight different groups at the targeted level, but it's not like. It is, you know, we're not, we're gonna look at all third graders, right? But for establishing the goals, we're not saying, uh, in our interim goal, we're saying we're highlighting where the, where the African-American third graders are. Doesn't mean we're not addressing the others, but kind of is like, almost like, that's not being true to the process. If we said, we're gonna look at it for African-Americans, for, um, you know, Latino, for English learners, for special education students, for all of them. So that's been a struggle, because we don't want a message to be, we don't, we're not supporting all the students, but we do want to have some of that discipline. Uh, we are being focused and to like, learn how to do this for everyone. So that's the, the, I don't, you know, I don't have a great answer, so like, is that gonna work or not? I think we're kind of trusting the process, and then we'll see as we see the student's progress.
The goals were divided in such a way that if you see one point one, two point one or three point one. It's about a focal group. So we selected a focal group, which is the group that needs the most attention. So that's how we selected the one point one, two point one and three point one. The second part, one point two, two point two, three point two, is the whole grade level and all students. So, you know, we've tried to do it in that method, so that way at each, whether you take one point one, two point one or three. It's around two hundred students, so you know, it's easier and we have an initiative like the each and every binding.
So I think it's been, I don't know, six or eight years since this approach was put in place. And I'm curious how staff has been evaluating implementation. And if there's examples of when areas that haven't worked and what staff has done to, um. How staff has respond, responded or recalibrated. Um, yeah, I'll stop there.
Um, then I'm gonna look to colleagues who've been here, who've been here for a while to share more. Just to say, I'll say one thing. Um, one. Uh, co- coming back to what I shared about like the interim assessments and being able to look at things, I'll say from, from my perspective, we haven't. Um, kind of taken advantage of, of, like, really learning from what's. taken advantage of, of like really learning from what's happening at sites. And then determining like what to lift up and what to try to, you know, what to try to spread and what to try to support. And, you know, we've had generally, in, in many ways, we have a decentralized system and that has not, you know, that hasn't led to that coordination in terms of our like evaluation of our progress over the years. I mean, we have had these, these assessments and the progress. Well, we haven't had the progress monitoring at this level, but we've had the assessment. So how have they been used over, over the years?
So I'm, I'm going to talk about implementation because that's what you mentioned, right? The implementation and where we do have collaborated with Stanford researchers to actually look at some of our implementation as well as internally.
Actually, can I just clarify? I think maybe my question wasn't, I'm more, we, so these assessments have been off track for a while. So what I'm asking is how we have been internally monitoring how our students are doing and then recalibrating to make change. If there are any specific examples that staff has been monitoring on behalf of our students and making change.
I appreciate your question, Commissioner Matomadi. And so I want to say, I think two things that we've been doing, we do look very, and collaboration with RPA, and I want to thank them for their work. We look really closely in the past, we've been looking at math milestones. And one of the things that has led us to this place and recognizing to the superintendent's point is that it's given us information on instruction, but it hasn't given us some greater information that we've needed around calibration with some of the standards and with some of the broader exposure that we want to have, you know, our students experience. So I would say internally, we have been following our data very closely. And I think our data has led to some of the changes that we are, have been implementing and that we have been growing over the years. And I think an example of that is our professional development with our teachers, particularly we recognize that we needed to dig deeper into the standards. And so when we look at essential content and academic ownership, we are really centering that across the district because we know that's what our students are in need of and that our, our teachers need support in. And so I, I would say over the time, over time, what we have been doing is working to build capacity internally at the central office level as well as with our site.
I'll have a question and. No, but I mean, I, I, I think behind your question is also a point. And so, I mean, I'll say in my time here, we don't have a, a robust, I, I haven't seen a robust system that says like, here's, you know, what we're trying to do now. That's why we're putting this in place. I, I haven't seen that, that, that where we say, okay, we're going to recalibrate and do this here or there. And if we, and, and that's why I guess I was saying about our system, if we do, like, I know, you know, there's individuals working hard or maybe areas working hard, but as a system, it's not, it's not there.
I'm going to jump in, then we'll go Commissioner Alexander, then we'll jump across the table and we'll kind of keep it going. To kind of build in that same line of thought, superintendent, could you speak a little bit about what will lead to successful implementation of the proposed actions across all school sites to ensure that every classroom, every student, every site is benefiting from it? I think just historically, one of the big issues we've had is not dreaming big, but implementing those big dreams across our entire district because of how big it is. And so seeing everything that's in here, seeing the intentions around the interim goals and where we want to get to. How does that manifest in actuality across sites? And how do we kind of manage and ensure that?
So if you look to page eight, actually didn't mention this when Commissioner Sanchez asked his question, but one of our key levers in language arts and math that we think is important is to start, as I said, we've had a kind of decentralized approach is to start saying, what can we expect is going to happen across all of our schools? And both, I, you know, I think education, like looking at education, you know, where there's been success in education and also just looking at how San Francisco works. This is not about people following a script or implementing, you know, something with fidelity, but it is about being able to say to your point, like in our schools, regardless of what school you go to in our district, you know, so here's an example, you know, for example, in kindergarten, right, that you are going to have time where students are developing their conceptual understanding, but also are developing procedural fluency up to five, right? And so what I'm highlighting on, on eight is an excerpt of kindergarten instructional guides that we've implemented this year that have now been expanded to be K five for next year in, in all subject areas. And we're going to be doing professional development on this. So the, and then this is where our lead folks and working with our site leaders, like this is where we want to focus the time spent in schools, looking at how are we doing with, you know, using our instructional guides, right? So that's what I think, I, I know something I'm interested in, but you've spoken to a lot. So knowing that, again, whatever school you're in, you know, you're going to, you know, teachers are going to be engaged in these standards and in this kind of learning. Now, what they do will be different because kids are going to be in different places in their classroom, but you know, you at least have a baseline from which we're working from that all families can, and, you know, can expect that their kids have, but that's going to be, so, oh yeah, that, that's kind of, that's the idea behind this.
Just one additional point I would love for you to address. How are you going to know that they are being used? Like, is there, what, what, not necessarily the word accountability, but how do we have confidence that these things are being used with fidelity across the, like, how do you know as the superintendent that we can have confidence that all these things, once they're in place, are going to actually be functioning?
Yeah. Well, so that's where we're setting up the monitoring of this. And so it's, I don't know if Tameetra Rice Mitchell is here, our new associate super. You're not, huh? Oh, you don't need to come up to me just, you just need to know that, you know, she knows this is her job and that, that the lead. And, and this is where in the reorganization, like the, the making clear that in lead, the role of the executive directors are supervising schools, like they're, they're going to be focused on the key, you know, levers, the other word is inputs. Like the key inputs that we're saying making it are going to make a difference so that we know this is happening. So it's through there that will, so I don't know exactly what that monitoring will look like. Yep. I'm, I'm expecting to see progress across all our schools through, you know, through the lead division.
Superintendent, I would chime in and say our core rubric is going to be our tool that we're using. Looking at the culture of learning, again, our central content, academic ownership and a demonstration of learning, all of our sites are being trained on that tool. And our leaders, we spent this year becoming familiar with that. We'll go deeper in the coming year, we'll beginning to share that more closely with our teachers and that will be a tool that we'll be leveraging for consistency across the district.
Thank you for your response. And I'll go to Commissioner Alexander.
I think this is building on the last two questions. And I, I want to say as a preface, I really do appreciate the revisions that were made to the report and the inclusion of more on instruction. But yeah, I guess I'm still trying to understand our analysis of, of, of why, from a systems perspective, we're getting the results we're getting, right? And I think that goes to Commissioner Pataki's question of like, well, where did we look at the data and then change things or, or Commissioner Bogut is more forward looking question of how are we going to know this is going to work? But to me, it's also like, can we analyze the system right now and in the recent past and say, okay, this is why this is happening. And it's not, and I know, like to give an example at the high school level, when I talk to math teachers, and I know we're not talking about high school because it's an eighth grade goal, but you know, they talk about the implementation of complex instruction. And so, but what, I don't know how well that's implemented. Is that implemented with fidelity across schools? Is it getting results? Is it not getting results? So I'm curious, like at an elementary and middle school level, like what's our, what is our current theory of action? And is, and what's our analysis of, is it working? Does that make sense? Cause I feel like a lot of this is kind of saying, this is what we're going to do. But like, what is, what is our analysis of, what is our theory of action now, system wide, K eight? And then how, what's our judgment as to what's pieces of it are working and which pieces are not?
Yeah. Two thoughts on that. So one is like in, in the report, I think using the instructional guides and the core rubric as an example, I mean, the theory of action behind that is like, our analysis is, is that there's inconsistency just at a basic level of like the standards being taught and the amount of time on the subject matter. And so we want to, you know, be clear on what the baseline is, a baseline expectations are, and then follow up on that. So like, if we were to make it an if then statement, like, you know, if across the district, there's a consistency in the, both the amount of time spent on math instruction as well as a focus on the standards, that's the academic ownership and essential content piece, then we'll do this. To your other point, again, I'm just going to, I'm going to now go back, go to the like, using this as an opportunity to, to like, we're learning about this process. I think you're asking a question and that's what I felt about your question too. It's more like, it's a question. And if the answer is no, really, it's like, well, you should look, you should look into this, right? So think what your question is, 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 you know, how, oh.
Well, no, I, my question is more on what is our analysis? Like, I'm not presuming to know. Like even in the high school example I gave, I don't know. I worked in high school in SFUSD for a long time, but I don't know how consistent implementation of complex instruction is. I don't know if the data shows it's working or not working. Those are, but those are the types of questions. I get what I mean. But for K eight, I don't even have a sense of, if I'm a third grade teacher or a sixth grade teacher in SFUSD, what is, what am I hearing from my principal, my coach, my bits of coach, if I'm a new teacher, what am I hearing from CNI math people? What communication do I have with them? And what are they telling me, right? Now, maybe, maybe it's just really inconsistent, right? And that's okay. Like, that's where we're at. I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of like, where are we at? Cause I, and that's what I'm not totally hearing here. So I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah. Did you want to add on just as I invoke your name?
Well, I was, no, I mean, it wasn't like, go look into it. It was like, I want to understand. Are there, what is work? Like even if it's small, like what is working? What's an example of when it's actually looked at and something has changed? And yeah, I mean, I, I do have another question, but I want you to finish.
No, well, I think, I mean, I guess, I guess where, where, where I was going with that is this is why I, I, this is, this is why we're proposing an audit, right? The audit will give us that information. And I guess what, what I heard, I heard, heard in your question is, don't you, do you need an audit though? Don't you have some ideas about what's behind this as well, you know? So, and I think that's a fair question. And, you know, wait, and so I'm going to actually, then I am going to turn it over to Dr. Priestley to both maybe briefly share like, why, you know, we did this for, for literacy. You know, why do it again for math? We, you know, if, and if I'm saying like, we know things aren't working, why do we need to do an audit? Like, you know, I'm basing that on the data, but also a sense of, of, you know, what's going on in our schools. So why have an audit and what ways are we learning from, you know, what Commissioner Alexander shared, like just from our interactions with the schools and how we're getting feedback from them.
So I want to say TNTP has been a very beneficial thought partner for us in terms of their depth of knowledge that the organization has and their ability to give us just really detailed feedback on what is working and not working in our curriculum as well as in the classrooms. And they, TNTP being, they have the advantage of having walked thousands of schools. And as much expertise as we may have in SFUSD, in our content teams, we don't have that kind of expertise. They have seen a range of teaching in tier one and that baseline teaching that we see, they have looked at hundreds, if not thousands of curriculums to know what's high quality and what's not. And I think what's really important, and we've learned this, this is our learning from the ELA. They can be really specific about what are the levers we need to address. Instead of saying here, we're, we're kind of, you know, trying to a lot of things. These are specific things that we see that we think you address that will move you towards increasing student achievement. And that's what we are gaining from them. And I think an example of that, one of the things we, we learned from the audit in ELA was that our students do the work that we ask them to do, but much of the work that we were putting in front of them was not grade level appropriate work. That was a big finding for us and across many schools. And so we need that same, and so that led us to, we need to really address our standards. We need to address tier one. We need to really support our teachers and making sure they know what grade level instruction looks like. And also helping them develop the tools so our students can carry the cognitive load, which was another finding that we had. So we are benefiting from that type of expertise. And that's why we really believe that the audit was really a big step in helping us develop the plan.
Did you want to get another question? Any question with Tommy? Let me get Commissioner Lamb in and then we'll come to you next.
Thank you. Thank you to the team for this preparation. I want to echo what Commissioner Alexander raised. It's really just getting clarity of, you know, what isn't working. You know, what is working or not working. So, but my question is really specific around professional development. Cause I hear of the attention, the resources that we've really focused in, you know, up and up to this point. And I'm sorry, didn't ask the question beforehand. Given our workforce challenges and historically of high turnover. You know, of our educators in this district and knowing that that also historically has impacted students, particularly African American and, you know, children. What are some things that for consideration of how to address those gaps, particularly when it comes to the correlation between professional development, the retention of our workforce? And what, you know, for the, the anticipated then growth that we would want to see from that, those investments? Is that making sense?
So I think the, the connection to. Yeah. Well, let me speak to the, the professional development piece. And he raises the question between retention and professional development. I'll turn to my colleagues if they have anything on this, but, and one, what we are trying to leverage is in one hand, what's so amazing about San Francisco is there's a lot, there, there are a lot of learning opportunities. And, and this is a very dynamic district. At the same time, there's not, there, there haven't been consistent learning opportunities, like district wide learning opportunities. And what I mean by that is like, we don't have, you know, district wide professional development day. And we just recently started having common release time and that's what we're looking at, at having some consistent professional development on the standards and on the instructional guides and some of the practices that were, that we're talking about. And so that will be new this, this coming year to plan that. That's district wide. It doesn't speak as much to the, what you're talking about where sure, at some of our schools, we have more new teachers. So we do have like the induction support and other support for, for new teachers in, in general. I'm not sure that there's more to add on around what specifically we do for them. So that one, I don't, I don't have more information. Anybody else that's? And if we don't, we don't.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead, please?
So kind of on that thread around professional development, investing in consistency. You know, we have had middle schools that have had, you know, consistent release time for PD. And that is through the first cohort of the Initiate Wonder Schools, which my children have benefited from many years ago. So I'm curious, as an example, you know, what have we learned from sites that are doing that around, you know, consistent PD time? Have we seen any differences, successes?
Let's take the most recent example, John Muir. And we've done a very detailed study on it for John Muir and the five factors that I would say have definitely been staff stability, the robust routines to build shared professional knowledge that you're referring to, their feedback routines, their opportunities to give their kids, you know, with, through this math interviews, the academic ownership that Dr. Priestley was talking about. And last but not the least is the support staff. And last but not the least is the uh, support staff that they have. So you know, definitely the consistent instructional support staff is a big asset too. So it is the staff uh, stability, the routines of building professional knowledge. They have structures where, you know, teachers can give feedback to other teachers. So you know, they have professional uh, knowledge routines. They have shared assessments, which is encouraging academic ownership. And uh, consistent support staff to help them through facilitating um, this common understanding. Last but not the least, feedback for both adults and students.
As a follow up, and it's okay if we don't, um, John Muir certainly has been a case study. Have we, do we have any examples at the middle school level, given that we've also seen consistent um, drops from the sixth or eighth grade as well?
So we don't have any analysis on, and that is a good point that there, there had been a common release at some of the schools. So we don't have an analysis, like, and I think it might impact. Uh, except for uh, in anecdotal that, that, that the teachers appreciate the planning time together.
At the middle school level, we do have a whole sales force report that we give every year to Salesforce because they have provided us with math coaches in the past. And that math coaching has had a positive impact, you know? So I do want to make sure I mention that.
We'll go to Commissioner Matamani.
Is it possible to take a look at any of those reports? Those Salesforce reports, could we get those? Are they public?
Are they public or they can just be made public or available to them?
One of them we even published. I mean, we presented it at a national conference. So yeah, they are definitely, especially the coaching one.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Matamani and then we'll see what others.
Commissioner Bogus, may I comment just briefly? I'm sorry. I think it might be helpful. Um, Commissioner Lam, I really appreciate your question because I do feel like um, professional development is a really big lever for us in terms of making change. I'm going to let Devin Krugman speak to the ELA pilot. And one of the things she can speak more um, to this, that she's been overseeing that directly. But one of the things we've been finding in our ELA pilot in the middle schools that we are um, doing at this moment, that when teachers have opportunity for um, dedicated common planning time, when they have time to be self reflective about their practice with the right tools and the right coaching, we are seeing some promising preliminary, preliminary results. So I don't want to over promise that, but I do think that structure of the right tools, common planning time, coaching and being really self reflective and research would um, I think support that. There's research out there that says there's a strong correlation between that. And so how can we replicate that at a really much larger s- scale? And that's what we're working towards at this time.
Okay, I'm trying to, I'm taking in a lot of information. Um, so I'm going to put my, my parent hat on and seeking K through 12 coherence um, and a, and a student experience. So when a student is off grade, either need remedial attention or working ahead. We don't currently have district wide math supports. So I'm going to refer back, I mean, we do not. So, and there's been things here and there, but we haven't for a very long time. And so one of the things I'm grappling with in this conversation is the delta between what we say and our aspirations and what we do. And, and acknowledging that we want to build trust with the community. And going back to your opening statements, there have been oh, so many workarounds in this district. From teachers, principals, parents, students themselves. Um, and so what I would like to know is how we are looking at, given that we have in many cases impeded those workarounds, are there um, bright spots in, in schools where we've seen discretionary budget allocated? Um, or teachers working unpaid in many cases to do extra work to, to serve their students? How, are there cases where we are seeing things that work like John Muir? Um, thank you to the city for John Muir. Um, so are we seeing cases that we can learn from now? Because people are doing them now while we are taking the time to have this conversation to, to kick this off. Where are the bright spots?
Uh, so I'll say, I know there are bright spots. Um, and I'll say, but yeah, uh, and maybe this is something to recognize about the report. They're not highlighted here as in, informing the kind of district wide approaches. Uh, so as we go through the uh, you know, the, the, what I'm talking about in the process and the, the, of looking at our overall map, you know, approach and the course sequence and everything, I think this, um, this is an area to make sure that gets included. Like that, that it's explicit where those are informing that. Uh, so I'll say, I, you know, we, we, we mentioned a couple of examples in here. I don't know, are there any others? Someone wants to speak to, otherwise I'll just say that's again, kind of feedback for the report. Uh, and as we're monitoring the progress, I'm honing in on those uh, um, bright spots to learn from that.
Can I follow up to that? So also building upon the process, and there was a reference, I can't remember if it was in the responses, I mean, or in the original report to a study group that's gotten input this last spring. So where can, what is, or what do you, you know, is there a place now? Or how will that, those um, how can things like that come forward from our community, from our, from our school sites, from our students themselves, from families? Cause can, I, I also want to mention the first time I heard about these problems was from students. Not from students frustrated about where they were as sophomores, juniors and seniors because of the pathways that we set them out and without career counseling or in college counseling that was adequate to, to get them to where they wanted to go. So I, I want to know more about what this process is going to look like.
Um, so I, I've been asking uh, that, that question as well. And so I can't speak to how, uh, again, I, I, you know, it hasn't necessarily informed us. But for example, a key part of that process, what I've been asking about, and I don't know if, if um, uh, Dr. Priestley or Devin want to share more is like, what are the opportunities to engage with department chairs? And Matt, like we, at every secondary school has a math department and a department chair. Where are we engaging and talking with them to, you know, that get that two way dialogue? So there have been department chair, there are department chair meetings. Um, you know, but I don't know how much they're informing or they may, maybe they are informing it more than I know. So again, I'll let you speak to it, but if not, that's like an example of where there needs to be that dialogue. They're the ones in the schools who are actually working with our, our, you know, students in the classroom.
So I'm going to start by saying, I think we can learn a lot from our school sites and from our students. I think that's, I think that would be um, it's where we need to focus our energy. So I'm just going to say that I, I believe in that. One of the things we've done, we've started that work by working with our lead partners. And so we've had some preliminary conversations. We want to move those to our principals and to our teachers and then to our students. Actually, as part of um, and we're learning again from our ELA pilot. One of the things that we are doing is engaging students and um, feedback on the um, the curriculum that they're experiencing. And so we know we have models that we can use to build that out the same way for math. And so our intentions for this year is to work with our principals, engage our teachers and some of our students and receiving feedback from them, uh, to your point, and what are the bright spots? What's really working for you, but what's not? And then what can we do in that moment to make some changes? And I think we start there and then like everything, can we scale that out across the system? So we have some equitable opportunity there. So I appreciate you, um, Commissioner Matamadi bringing that to light because that's what the work that will happen and needs to happen.
Thank you for responding both here and well, Commissioner.
Um, I was wondering, when constructing our current proposed actions, did we look at our past, like previous propose actions for student um, outcomes? And have we looked at where they might have failed or succeeded in improving student outcomes? And how has that influenced our current proposed actions? All right, as.
Uh, no, that may, uh, yeah, I'll give one, one example and see if the, I think this is to uh, uh, Commissioner Alexander's point about like the complex instruction. I think what, one of the things that, I, I guess two things are, uh, from our analysis, it doesn't seem like we, we, you know, we haven't done that we need to do better. So one is, again, there's a lot of great ideas here, but there hasn't been the uh, follow up to really understand like, how are they actually working? So that paying attention to implementation um, that uh, Dr. Connor was starting, was um, starting to mention. And then two, we have seen enough, I mean, I do feel like what informs us is when we, you know, have rolled something out that would be, you know, is intended to be district wide, like our new, uh, you know, well, it's not new anymore. But you know, the um, uh, you know, a, a new um, um, course or like, you know, like how we're going to link to the standards. And there hasn't been like a, a clear definition of what's expected. Um, and then what's going to be the support and what's going to be the follow up? And so that's why you hear in the plans, like the focus on, on those areas. So I think those are uh, two lessons learned that are trying to inform a more, if we use, we like to use the word uh, coherent approach. Um, um, being clear across the system. Uh, I don't know if there's other examples you want to share, what informs, but I'll, I'll leave it at that.
So I wanted to correct something I said earlier, because I, I said complex instruction was high school. But I realized I have an email from a middle school, a sixth grade math and science teacher today who says, I chose to cheat in SFUSD largely because of complex instruction orientation of the math department. So like, so there's one teacher that thinks that our approach, a sixth grade teacher that thinks that our approach is complex instruction. So I guess that's to my point. I mean, I like, is it? And if it is, do we have data on how well it's been implemented? Do we have data on, you know, because that's, I know that's, you look at, talk about PD. I mean, when I was a principal of, at a high school, all of our math teachers did complex instruction PD. They were trained by CNI. Like this was a massive investment of district time, resources, expertise. Um, it was hand in hand with the development of the new curriculum in math that teachers were also engaged with. That was a broad based effort, heard critiques of it, right? So again, I'm not saying, I, I think there were probably good things, there were probably bad things. But if we don't, I guess that's again, my question, if we don't have an analysis of what we've done for the last 10 years that have produced these quite mediocre and unacceptable results, that, then, you know, and again, I'm not saying complex instruction is the problem. Maybe it's that we didn't implement it widely, widely enough. Maybe the schools that did it have better results. I don't, I don't know, but if we don't have answers to those questions, I don't see how we build a good strategy, I guess.
Uh, thank you. I really appreciate all of this. Uh, oh my God. I'm usually the one chasing everyone else in their microphones. That's funny. Um, so uh, Dr. Priestley, I, I appreciate you naming, um, you know, the need for the, the shared professional development, you know, the, the solid coaching, effective coaching, the reflective practices, you know? Um, I'm looking at this, it feels to me like with math, we're almost where we were 10 years ago with literacy. Right? Um, we did a couple of different phonological processing pilots. We had fits and starts, we collected data, 10 schools, oops, where did the data go? No, it, 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 so I'm, anytime we start anything new, I have a healthy level of cynicism here in the districts. Um, and so I'm very optimistic about the direction we're heading and I love the coherence. I guess my questions are really from a strategic standpoint about, um, you know, we've talked a lot about learning and needing more data, understanding our current baseline. Um, for me, it's a question of what are we doing to actually systematize this? You know, how do, I, I just, I, I don't want us to get in the same loop of starting one, oop, wait, new leadership team, we're gonna pull in the next, whatever the coolest buzzword is. How do we actually systematize this and move forward and make the progress our students deserve? And that was a nice punch.
Oh, yeah. Uh, I mean, I think we've, we've been speaking to that, I think. And I, I was thinking again about like what a progress monitoring um, report is, is supposed to do. And I think, I mean, I think one thing we're highlighting here is in, in order to systematize it, maybe there needs to be a little bit more um, depth uh, analysis, understanding how the root causes behind it. Right? When I do share about the inconsistency across the school, I mean, I see the nods and like, again, I, I have been, you know, visiting our schools and talking to people and I know our, you know, I've talked with our, our team, that's agreed. But there needs to be some more probing around that, you know, that I think your example of complex instruction, like you did. Yeah, okay, so there's inconsistency, why and how, how come? And so one we have said that they were clear on is like, there hasn't been district wide structures to really monitor uh, or, you know, check in and have feedback. Beyond that, I think there's other things we need, we need to fix for.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then I have a second part of my question later.
Are you sure?
Yeah, go.
Okay. Um, well, okay. So here's an example, because I, I can tell in reading board policy, math placement policy sixty one fifty two point one, that there was an attempt by the board to put a system in place, like when the curriculum went forward and to support, I mean, all, we're ensuring within the first month that the student takes algebra one, that there's diagnostic tests to, in, to measure people pro- progress and support differentiated instruction and to help ensure accurate placement. And where students need extra support, they will be given um, activities during before or after school, during lunch, depending on the campus. I mean, that was like explicitly designed to support the implementation of curriculum and instruction and to provide and to equalize across school sites so that we can make sure that there isn't unfair access. So my question is, what happened? I mean, where, where has this been carried out? Was it ever at all or in any place? Um, you know, and this, this is board policy. And, and also, there's also supposed to be a, the board will review aggregate people placement data and sure that, you know, all of these things are humming along. So when, and I, I mean, we've been attending these meetings. I don't recall math being on the agenda or this, and I know that there's been many attempts to get this information. So this is an example of the, the system, the really desperately not wanting to repeat the same cycle and feeling a little bit um, uh, watching and waiting and, and hoping, and behind every skeptic is a disappointed idealist. So.
Well, and can I follow up on that? Because I think that, that is a.
Oh, sorry, I turned it off.
Story of my life today. Um, and, but I think that that one board policy, we have so many other board policies that are that exact example, safe and supportive schools, you know, inclusive schools resolution, that we have these great aspirational policies and then this huge disconnect between, you know, what, this is exactly what we're doing in our governance model, right? You know, we have policy here and then we, which is strategic and we don't have the technical and tactical yet. And what hopefully we'll do through the LCAP and other budgeting process is we're not funding the things we say. We have these policies and then there are unfunded mandates that go nowhere because we don't fully understand the budget, right?
But this, I mean, I, I do want my question answered.
Yes.
Because this was a result of creation of curriculum, commitment to curriculum and implementation of pathways. So I, like, did, was, it's here. I'm just wondering if it was especially given that we had over the last several years, a lot of community desire for this kind of assistance.
Um, so, I mean, to my, to my knowledge, the systemic level of um, review and monitoring and feedback at board level, you know, and, and at the district level has not happened. I don't know if there's a, you know.
I'm actually more interested in the students and give the students getting the supports. Well, have the students gotten, did this ever? And give the students getting the supports, have the students gotten, did this ever get implemented for the students?
As, as, as described there, yeah. I have one more.
So my follow up to the point I made earlier about, it feels like we're about 10 years behind in math. Where we were in literacy, I don't think any of us is willing. And I saw, you know, there were some questions about how to accelerate, right? So I think that's the second part of the systematized question is. You know, and I think Commissioner Lamb, you named it as well, like what resources do we need to put in place to. Accelerate this work and disrupt and. And actually get to the point of equity, which is what we all say we value.
And I think what you're hearing from, and this is one of the things I really respect about all of my colleagues on this board, is like a desire to really be real and not. And to sort of cut through, like, I don't, I think we don't want to repeat. The experience of the past of having, like, as you said, these lofty goals. And, you know, being able to, a, a, and I think there's, there's an incentive for all of us. And here we are, we're on TV, we're in public, like, it's, it's really hard for us to say it's not working and we're. And that's on us, and so I just want to also just acknowledge that for staff, like, this is not intended as a gotcha thing. This is really just, I think, us wanting to really be real about where we're at. And, and part of that is being able to analyze like what's happening now in the system and what's not happening. And that doesn't mean the employees are bad individuals, right? It, but it, I think probably does mean that our culture needs to change because as we like to say. Student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change, so our culture needs to change, our adult behaviors need to change. And that starts with the folks, you know, in the central office who are kind of in charge of leading this. And so I think that's where we're coming from, but it is really in the desire of just being real and getting it done this time and not. You know, these are really ambitious goals. And so if we can't just tinker around the edges and not be real and have any hope of meeting them, I think that's.
No, I appreciate that, and, and, yeah. No, and this is where it's good dialogue, because I mean, I feel like it is, it's dialogue and it's interesting that we have these discussions. I mean, I feel like, you know, when you, when, I, I think Commissioner Fisher's point is well taken. If I were to adopt a different stance, but say, you got, that's the board policy, right? So what has the board done to follow up to see if anybody has, has been, you know, working on this policy, right? And it is, uh, it, there's, and, and this is what this, you know, process does. And even, even this progress monitoring report is still pretty broad. It makes you hone in on saying, on a few commitments and saying, we're gonna follow through on that. And I think that's the being real part, right? That we don't want to hear some commitments here. And then here, you know, six months later, the next progress monitor report, we don't know, or this, you know, well, you know, this happened and that happened. And, and not, and, and what I expect is like, you come back and say, we said we're gonna implement this intervention. We said it would help, you know, third graders and sixth graders, plus the other kids with supporting, but that's what our targets are. Let's see how we did and then, then actually do the things that you're saying, you don't have. You know, that it may have been done and assured done in pockets, but having been done, this is the level where the, the systemically, the, the superintendent has been doing. Saying, here's what we learned about it in terms of what's actually happening in schools.
I, I just really, I appreciate that, um, that framing Commissioner Alexander. Because I think it's really important to recognize the work that our district personnel put into this math curriculum. And just how transformational it was at the time. I mean, this came about when Common Core curriculum was brand new and everyone was shifting and. You know, we were at the forefront of working with industry leading experts on math. And developing something completely brand new from scratch. You know, it was a passion project that involved all layers of the district. And the intention of doing it in house was really to make huge shifts. And the, the intentionality and resources that went into that, I think. I, I mean, I'm, I'm just blown away. And that also aspirationally tells me when we put our mind to something, you know, we can do huge things. And so, uh, let's do it again here around math, again. I believe there was a, a board question, which I didn't ask, I appreciate my colleagues bring it forward, no surprise, I'm gonna ask about college access. So while it's not a student outcome goal specifically, that was approved by the board. I'm curious, superintendent, given what we know around our eighth, you know, what you're bringing forward right now in this eighth grade. Goal, to then, the consideration around the alignment of. Uh, career and college readiness and. For, for me specifically. Understanding, you know, truly what are the STEM requirements? Um, for students to be ready in the 21st century, not only workforce, but of college readiness. We haven't had that discussion as a board, I have, we, you know, haven't brought that forward, but I also want to be, since we're having real talk. Just the realities of. The competitiveness. Um, I think historically, we've really seen. You know, the investments in public education, pre K twelve was gonna be that pathway to our. Higher, our public higher ed institutions in California. And that's something that I'm curious, you know, as you're thinking about future performance. You know, the alignment between this eighth grade proficiency, how does that feed into? It's not just only college, because I know folk, folks sometimes, you know, say, not, you know, college readiness. But it's also career access too, um, in, in the STEM workforce. So have you all had any of those discussions or what would be something for consideration? Uh, looking forward around that alignment of between those two goals?
Man, I think that that's the discussion with the overall course sequence and what different opportunities we want to have. And, um, and then, you know, I think it's, it's connected to the conversation we're having in our high school path course about. Like what, what offerings do we have and where are the different points where students can make choices? And or, you know, get support that they need, um, you know, to, around. This is not just math, but around their college and career aspirations.
And I think going back to the root cause, I think that is a theme that I'll take away tonight of, um, kind of improvements for this monitoring is. I think the desire, the, and really responsibility of understanding those root causes. And when it comes to STEM, um. You know, in high school and then on to post-secondary, it's really thinking of and understanding, like, what does it take now? And I don't know if our students really have a clear sense of that. I, and, you know, I've talked about my own kids of being high school students, both of them being in STEM. Like, it's kind of been, it really has put the responsibility on the student and the family. And most often, you know, students that I've worked with are first generation such as myself. So we're really on our own in many ways in navigating the system. The public system from our K, our traditional K twelve experience to, um, post-secondary. So I just wanted to note that.
We just heard that from the D-Lite tonight.
And maybe, uh, I know we're getting time for public comment, maybe. Uh, I, I, to comment on that rather than my comment. But our students who are graduating, uh, I, I, I feel like I saw some reflectives nod there when listening. So if you want to have the final word for this section and then we can go.
I don't think I want to get into the whole. Argument surrounding like Algebra One in eighth grade. But I do think that particularly in relation to STEM discussions, um, I think it's. It's not necessarily just qualifying, because I think a lot of colleges these days do a good job at considering the context of what school you go to. And understanding that if you go to a school where calculus isn't offered, they can expect you to have taken it. But particularly for even like top UCs where if you're applying for an engineering major or something, even like a science related. They're expecting you to have at least one year of calculus, um, if not BC as well. And there, I'm sure there are high schools, I think, that don't even offer calculus. And I think, um, originally, like my goal coming into high school was, I had hoped to take calculus. Um, but at a school like Lowell where so many kids are trying to take calculus. I tried to double up on Algebra One and Geometry and didn't get it because it was full. And then I tried to double up in Geometry and Algebra Two and didn't get it because it was full. And so unless I took like an online course during the school year, I wouldn't have, or, well, I didn't do that. So I never had the chance to get up to that level. Um, and for me, I wasn't pursuing a STEM degree, so it wasn't necessarily. Too big of a stressor, but I think if you did pers- plan to pursue a STEM degree, that'd be a lot more difficult for you to grapple with.
Yeah, um, I think I just want to say that Commissioner Lamb's comments really resonate with me. Um, I'm going to be the first in my family to attend college. And I think like a really big factor in school and especially like the math field too. Like especially when applying to colleges is looking at the requirements each college will have that they want you to take. And I think I've heard from a lot of students at my school especially about like how we have limitation on AP classes. And how if we were to take AP calculus, we would have to take pre-calculus. And you'd only be in pre-calculus if we took, um, Algebra Two. And it like, it's just, it's just this very like complex chain of math classes that when you're a freshman in high school, you're not really beginning to wrap your head around. And I think I just want to say like your comments really did resonate with me. And I think that there definitely needs to be special attention paid towards first generation students, low income students, who's navigating the college process. And also just figuring out like what classes they need in order to both graduate and also attend college.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So can we track or do we track? Information about student, stu- students attempting to get into a course that's then been closed. So, I mean, we've advertised our pathways, but I hear so many stories like yours, Cal, and like yours, Isabella. That I don't know that they're being captured. We're only seeing what kids are taking, not what they're trying to take. And so I, I would love to see as a board member, and I, I'm assuming my colleagues would as well, as, as much information as possible about what our students are attempting. To have access to as well as what they are getting access to, to the extent possible. I mean, the geometry summer school waitlist is a great example. Um, so, yeah, so I'll just, if there's any, yeah.
Yeah, it's just to add to, I think too, if there are any other barriers that are structural that will prevent access. Because like if you can't get to the prerequisite for the other thing, then you wouldn't even kind of have that gauge of need or demand too. Um, the question I had, I'm gonna close this out and go to public comment unless other folks have others, we can do kind of a lightning round next. I guess I was just curious, looking at proposed actions and some of the root cause analysis towards our solutions. Um, how do we factor in the role that like academic supports and tutoring plays, especially the role that that. Especially the organizations that play those roles that aren't officially a part of the district. And have funding streams that aren't directly connected to the district. And so I guess how are we gauging that, balancing for that? And is that incorporated into like our plan of attack? Um, or is it not? And that's something that kind of exists outside of the remedies that kind of exist in this plan. I don't know if I need, any clarity around that.
I can say it's, it's definitely been incorporated in our, that I know, in our literacy approach. Like we work with, um, the SFF Fund and it's a literacy collaborative that has provided additional tutoring and support from BookNook to other, other things. Where, uh, where are we with, uh, if we have that for math, or maybe that's something we need to set up for math?
So again, so Mitch, we have expanded, um, two things I would say. One, Dreambox is, is the superintendent previously mentioned, which is a digital platform that'll be available for all Keith Rafe students. And then we also are, this year we had a pilot with BookNook who launched a math. Pilot for ninth grade students only. It was, um, we have about two hundred, um, one ninety three. Um, I'm listening to Dr. Connor in my ear, she says one ninety, uh, one hundred ninety three students. We are going to look at the data and see if we want to expand with that particular program. We also, um, connected with Stanford who provided us some detailed information about some of the top tutoring. Vendors that might be available and if we would like to engage with any of them. So we've been exploring that and we are actively meeting with some, um, vendors like next week on. If that's another direction we want to go, so we're pursuing those avenues. And we want to, as much as possible, make these opportunities accessible to all students inside the school day and also outside the school day. So we're trying to think about who are, um, particularly at the secondary level, who those students are and how they might interact. Which is a little bit different than our elementary students when we're trying to get them, um, around their foundational skills. But we are actively, um, working to put together really a menu of options. That, um, students and families can take advantage of as well as teachers.
Thanks for that, it's just for a point of clarity, would, would you say then that within kind of our plan? We've kind of identified the number of seats and spaces we would need for kind of that additional support so that we can kind of gauge for? Does that something that we still would need to merit out? Or does this kind of assume that we're able to meet those and we'd have to develop a different plan or approach if things change? Like budget cuts to CBOs that provide other programming or supports or things like that where they have to reduce services? I guess I'm interested if we've calibrated for in those things or are those things that we actually aren't? I guess fully prepared to, to deal with, does a potentially.
Yes, we, we do consider that, um, different programs fit the needs of different students. And so we look at, we work with our sites to say, if we have students who are performing below grade level of whatever space, you know. How many seats would we need for that, you know, for a particular program? And so we try to be careful to match. And actually, I always try to give a little extra to overextend to make sure that we can, um, meet whatever need that we might have.
Thank you so much for your responses. I think at this point, we're gonna transition into public comment. Uh, and I believe we'll start with in-person public comment and then we'll see we have purchase. Thank you, we do have, uh, twenty seven cards for in-person president bugs. I'm gonna call the first five, uh, speakers up, so please, um, come line up when you hear your name. Rex Ridgeway. Chanel Blackwell. Maya K. Rory Abernathy. And Rachel Cow, our co.
Thank you, Rex Ridgeway, four facts why Algebra One needs to be put back in the eighth grade. Fact one, our high school students cannot get to calculus. Fact two, Long Beach, Dublin, Cupertino, uh, districts allow Algebra One in the eighth grade. They're better prepared than our kids. Three, fact, the heads of the Department of Harvard, Stanford, UC Berkeley, UCLA, wrote a letter to you guys last June. Saying that this compression course is, doesn't prepare our kids for calculus. In fact, four, thirty percent of our families in this city have their kids in private schools. And we're gonna continue to lose a lot of families doing a second thought about letting their kids go into high school with this math problem. We need to put Algebra One back in the eighth grade. It is a crime scene and we should approach math with caution. Think it through, this is so serious, I lose sleep over this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Maya, my children are district alumni. SFUSD reminds me the Pink Floyd song Time, ticking away the moments that make up a dull day. Fritter and waste of hours in an offhand way. Then one day you find ten years have got behind you, no one told you when to run. Ten years ago, I stood here saying the math strategy was a foolish thing to do and don't experiment on vulnerable kids. I refuse to allow mine to be guinea pigs. Now my son is an electrical engineer designing analog integrated circuits. My daughter flew in from Massachusetts last night, she's a STEM college senior, she turns twenty one in a few days. How many students these last ten years were derailed? Where is the urgency to fix this? This is an irreplaceable moment in time. You run to catch up with the sun, but it's sinking. What are you waiting for? How many more students be left behind as the district drags their feet? The time for change is now, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Chanel Blackwell, mama to, um, public school sons incoming seventh and, um, twelve grades. Thanks for hearing our voice, um, that said, um, is, you know, as parents, speed up the K eight math audit and start offering well comprehensive. Math professional development is needed like yesterday, or kids can't wait years, for years for San Francisco's. Um, unified district to assess challenges in our instructional materials and practices. Ensure a cohesive, um, and, uh, equal high school math courses. Bring back eighth grade algebra, bring it to a vote hopefully by twenty twenty three, twenty first semester. It pay, it's painful for me to watch, um, our. It pay, it's painful for me to watch um, our smart. Son in seventh grade, incoming seventh grade hated math. Just getting by with a B average because it's the same math there wasn't in elementary school. The common chord math does not work in middle school. Uh, mine is a terrible thing to waste. And I just urge you to take care of this matter. Thank you for being a service for our kids.
Thank you.
Rory Abernathy, United Educators San Francisco, um, math teacher. So this is exactly how complex instruction works. You have a bunch of people from different varied and information expertise. And um, but you didn't raise your hand. And what, what you needed to do to raise your hand. Is you should have asked labor, you should have asked teachers. We could, all those questions you were answer, asking, I could, we could all answer them. We were sitting there talking about it. You did not invite us into this conversation. The Board of Education meetings have a lack of transparency. Um, respectfully Superintendent, you are a newcomer. So you're a new student in, in this situation and, and there's, and it was clear from your, your comments that you have a lack of context. And so it's important that you bring us into this room because I'm, my number one question is how are you gonna pay for this? You saying you can't give us raises, but you have all of these goals that you're, you're trying to reach that costs money. It costs staff. You can't recruit math teachers. You have nineteen openings. You want all these goals met with nineteen openings, new teachers with no coaches, no support? And then I will say this, you did not talk about the correlation to attendance. You did not talk about the correlation to overreaches to world. A black student is to sped. All of those things impact scores.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rachel Cow. I'm also a math teacher in the district middle school. Um, to start, I wanted to answer the question that Comis- Commissioner Alexander had asked about consistency across the district. Consistency definitely requires money, resources and training. I also want to acknowledge that a lot of math teachers coming out of these new math programs are already trained in complex instruction, right? So that uh, means that credentials, um, this already has what our district ha- needs in place. Um, according to the new math plan, SFUSD wants to revise the entire curriculum and create a new system for math classrooms. This also requires time and specifically money, money that the district already told us doesn't exist. New curriculum cannot simply be handed to teachers with an expectation that it be taught correctly. Switching to a new curriculum requires time and training, and this training costs money. We cannot continue to set goals without clearly defined resources to support these goals. So the first resource must be the money for training. The other resource is teachers. Currently, SFUSD is bleeding teachers. There's currently nineteenth math teacher vacancies that exist in the middle school and high schools. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call in the next group. Mena Young, John Jerson, Randy Markman. Leanna Louie. And Winnie Fung.
Hi, my name's Mena Young. I'm a uh, Mission High alumni. And uh, my kids also graduated from uh, Lowell ten years ago. Uh, I was a, 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 a school site. Uh, council chair. And I know ten years ago, we were able to uh, have better performance than where you are right now. And that's ridiculous. Okay, and more money too. We had to do a lot of budget cuts ten years ago. And we were able to make it better than what you guys hear. So please implement opportunities for students and no delays because you have already wasted. Many, many generations of talents the last few years. Don't go into. Your ideology, okay? That's not how it's measured. We are measured on how we compete in the world and we are failing our students. So please implement. The math in eighth grade and whatever opportunity you can give the students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Jerson. I'm a parent and a product of seventeen years of public education. Uh, the TNT, the TNTP research that was cited today suggests that the biggest positive impact. On student outcomes comes from teachers having higher expectations for their students. What expectations are we setting when we're telling middle school students they're not capable of learning algebra? The Stanford research today cites uh, shows that the algebra education withholding is a failed policy. We know that now. We've known that for a while. Let's please finish reversing this policy and stop withholding education for children. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brandy Markman. I'm an SFUSD parent and organizing team member from the San Francisco Education Alliance. We prepared a statement in response to this workshop presentation. The San Francisco Education Alliance demands that Superintendent Wayne. Immediately refrain from proposing a number of math curriculum strategies outlined in this report. Starkly stated, parts of this plan set our public school educators and students set to fail. It sets a target for increased standardized test scores without funding the tried and true solutions that ensure that all of our students achieve excellent in math. For instance, there is no mention of a plan to recruit and retain more qualified teachers and professionals. We are also alarmed to learn of the proposed massive expenditure of the online program Dreambox Learning. When funds are sorely needed to hire more man to math teachers. Our children and youth exceed excellence by receiving uh, instruction from caring top during professionals and teachers. And also at a time when the teacher is reporting a budget crisis. We demand that the district immediately halt the plan to waste money on expensive consultants from the TNTP to audit the math curriculum. It TNT was founded by Michelle Ree, who was notorious for um, functioning against a charter school commercial and waiting for Superman.
Thank you. Alright, I'll call the next group. Sherry Lau. Christine Lindenbach. June Zhu, I believe. Forgive me if I mispronounced. Tan Chan Kam. And Patrick Wolf.
Good evening. For the record, there were fifty people here at the start of this. Um, I wanna first of all, thank. The Superintendent of Schools for being transparent, open and honest. We have to reward people when they do the right thing and not the wrong thing. Willful ignorance is a reflection in this ten-year assessment of what's going on with our math program. If ours, if you were a hospital. Or an airline. Would you wanna fly an airline with a forty-six percent landing rate? Or a thirty-four percent success rate of getting somebody from point A to point B? Your superintendent is doing something that is long overdue. And I would like to find out what plans you have in place to audit every single department and every single staff member. To make sure that we don't fail any more students. Thank you Superintendent Wayne for doing what needs to be done and your staff needs to support you and get behind you. You're doing the right thing.
Thank you.
I guess, I guess it's thinned out. Um, well, I just wanna say uh, thank you. Uh, Superintendent Wayne and thank you the board um, for taking this step. Because for many years, the district. Quite frankly, was lying to parents, to teacher, to students, teachers, the community about how we were doing. And for many years, the Board of Education failed in its oversight responsibility. And you are now taking the step, the hard step of really looking at how we're doing and how we can do better. As you take this, um, as you go forward on this path, I'd like to make a suggestion. Which is, I think actually Commissioner Fisher, you put your finger on something, maybe whether you knew it or not. When you said that the original, the, the math curriculum from ten years ago, nine years ago was. Very bold and innovative. And sort of our attempting to be a leader. I don't think we should be trying to be leaders. We're not good at this. That's okay. That's actually a tremendous opportunity because we can do much, much better for our students and for our community. We should be learning. We should be learning from other districts whose values we share, we do well. We should be learning. From our own experience, we should be learning from outside expertise. I think we're at the start of a really exciting journey and I wanna thank you for leading us there.
Thank you. I'll call the next group. Li Ching Lam. Robert Lo. Chow Hui Zhang. Julie So. And Amy.
Hi, I'm Julie So. I'm a fourth generation San Franciscan and a, a public school graduate. Thank you for the math teachers here. Um, I'm a former mathematician and an attorney as well, and I think the great public school teachers that I had. I started a scholarship and I'm looking at the two uh, student leaders. I started a scholarship at UC San Diego where I got my graduate degree in applied math. And it's combining my love of politics, law and math. And it's a, a master's level student using mathematics or statistics towards social justice and civic engagement. I am told now that at the graduate school in mathematics and statistics, there's not a single US citizen. Uh, currently studying graduate math and statistics. That should be shocking to all of us. And um, UC Berkeley just started a new um, college of com- data computing and um, science and society. How many of those seats are gonna be filled by US citizens and, and students in California? And who have been educated in public schools in our nation? Think about it. It's a national security issue.
Thank you. I'll call the next group. Is there a name I called that I haven't come up yet? Okay, Meredith Dodson. Ho Lau. Selina Chu. Diane Yap. And Anastasia Wong.
Good evening. Meredith Dodson, representing the San Francisco Parent Coalition and thousands of public school parents from across the city. Um, it's great to hear tonight this acknowledgement of our math challenges, our failures as a district. Um, we are supposedly progressive city, but we continue to see this equity gap, um, and it's only widened. Over the recent years, the discussion is good and important. But I think we all see it here and it's hard to, someone commented, it's hard to do it like in front of TVs and in the public. We need to take more urgent, bold, immediate action. Our kids don't have the luxury of time for three-year plans and pilots and waiting. SFUSD is not a model district that has the luxury of all these pilots and trials like Patrick Wolf was just saying. There are evidence-based strategies, curricula, materials, teacher trainings, tutorings. Uh, things that we can and must invest in now. If this room were filled with kindergartners, would you have the same three-year proposals that you would be making to them? I don't think so. We have to take immediate actions now. Move on from the three-year plans. Let's do what works now.
Thank you.
The only people here in support of the failed experiment of forbidding Algebra I in eighth grade are driven by ideology. Or wealthy enough that they can simply pay to enroll their own children in algebra earlier. Sound policy can't be made on the basis of ideology alone. Equity sounds good in theory, but this policy has not achieved it. Now only the privileged can afford to take algebra in eighth. Is that equity? True equity is tracking. Let each student learn at their own pace. Give students options for summer school or extended school hours if they're fa- falling behind. Let them accelerate if they're moving faster than others. Both SFUSD facing enrollment drops, it doesn't make sense to continue this failed experiment. Limiting opportunity did not close the math achievement gap. We have nearly ten years of data now. How do those who aren't ready for algebra in SFUSD benefit from holding back those who are ready? At least allow the option of algebra in eighth if you truly believe in equity.
Thank you.
So um. I grew up in San Francisco and I went to school, public school through here. Um, I'm also a teacher in SFUSD in math and I teach at the high school level for fifteen years. Um, I took algebra as a ninth grader. Um, and I got into uh, high levels of calculus and did not get into competitive UCs. Um, but at the same time, I teach at a high school here where we have students who take ninth grade algebra. Apply to top UCs as um, under STEM fields. And having taken a single course of calculus and they still get in. So this idea of that needing calculus to be a STEM major is just a myth. It doesn't exist and I think we shouldn't let that lead a lot of these decisions that we're doing. Um, I can also talk about from the perspective of a teacher. Teaching algebra to ninth graders. And I saw it before when it was eighth grade algebra and I saw it after when it was ninth grade algebra. And back when it was ninth grade, eighth grade algebra, like students would come in like being able to pass the test, but they didn't know a lick of algebra. Like we spent years just reteaching them the algebra, even though they had passing grades in it. But now, like now I see after like algebra's been moved back to ninth grade, like they don't have algebra on their transcript. But they come in with much stronger conceptual understanding and we spend less time reteaching them the algebra. Let us do that work.
Thank you.
So my name is Selina Chu. I'm a parent of two SFUSD students. And I'm here not to give you a lot of, a speech. I'm here to share my personal experience. I grew up in Chinatown, one of the poorest neighborhood in this uh, city. And I didn't move out until eleventh grade. And I can tell you, I, we live in extreme poverty. Family of four living in one room. And I, I'm sharing with you that don't assume, never assume. Kids coming from disadvantaged household or low-income kids cannot learn. You have the responsibility to provide at least a decent public education. This is the only option we can learn by going to school. And you are providing less than what others are offering. That prevents us from having the option to have more opportunities in life. You have to provide our option, whether we will use it in our life or not, that needs to be there. Having no money is not excuse for you to not do it. Regardless of this money or not, education needs to be there for the children. We should not expect any less for public education. I'm not expecting any less from my children. This is the SFUSD that got me to where I am. I'm doing much better and I hope you offer the same to other kids. And low-income families. Thank you.
Alright, last group. Wilson Chu, Supriya Ray, Jeff Lucas. Andres, Andres Marti.
Superintendent Portmeres, thank you for uh, taking on this new task of doing the workshop on the math curriculum. I do wanna say and then kind of also um, advocate for more opportunities for, for students that. That have the, to have the, the will and the ability to be able to take higher levels of math. I think that having these opportunities are very important to allow them to be able to excel. But at the same time, when you're, when you're reviewing the, the math uh, curriculum and objectives. To also, to also, to be able to uplift. The underperforming students as well. I think that the opportunity is here to kind of bring all the parents together. Uh, under together and in support of the district as a whole is in front of you. And I think that we can uplift underserving, uh, underperforming students. As well as providing opportunities for other students. And I would hope that you would take these things into consideration and then bring us together. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Lucas, uh, just three quick things. Uh, first, I appreciate the end, or I call the end of defensiveness of the district on math. Uh, we need to improve math outcomes. The district isn't defending the past ten years anymore. Thank you. Um, second. Um, Dr. Wayne is new to the district and one of the first things that he encountered was our payroll system, which was a complete mess. But I think he's come through it and he's learned a lot from that. Maybe there's some lessons there. Well, people are shaking their heads. Is it better than it was? No, it's not. Oh, whatever, alright. Regardless. The path followed there was to try to identify some root causes. There were a lot of defects. There were a lot of kids who were not around. Pay, teachers who are getting paid. There are a lot of kids who are not learning. He, maybe you can apply some of the same principles of how you attack that problem and apply it to the math. It's possible. Um, and third, last thing is how can we help? How can the community help you um, on our journey to better math outcomes? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Supriya Ray. I wanted to thank you as well for acknowledging the problems and issues that have plagued SFUSD in math. I'm always a little surprised at uh, you know, when folks express uh, a sense that one size fits all, fits all, cause it's usually not true. Uh, my son was bored stiff and got an algebra book from somebody else when he was in seventh grade and started studying it at home. So we put him in an algebra class this year and we were able to do that. But not everybody can. And there are also students who aren't ready for algebra. Although I think many more students would be were the curriculum revamped. And were, was more, more, more professional development given to help students, students learn and teachers teach. Curriculum, you know, more effective. more effective, more evidence-based curriculum better. So I would simply ask that everyone keep in mind that people are different places. We should meet them where we're at, where they're at. And that it's really important to provide those students who need help the most with help now and to give students a solid foundation now. Because otherwise you just lose them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andres Marty, I am currently a teacher at Galileo. I'm also a former parent of a student who graduated here at SFUSD. And she, like most American kids, did great in high school. The way is like ten years ago, more than ten years ago, about ten years ago. Got a five in calculus AP, got a five in stats, took one semester of calculus in college and then never took another math or science class again. So it was a mad dash to calculus. It wasn't a choice kids were making, everyone was being forced into it and it was unhealthy for a lot of kids. A lot of kids ended up, when I was coaching in my earlier years here, you go into high school algebra class and it was really a, it was a. Anyway, Galileo now, all ninth graders taking algebra for the most part, all tenth graders taking geometry. It seems pretty healthy and kids have ways to accelerate and they choose to do it whichever way works for them. Summer geometry doubling up, the sophomores taking a compression course as juniors. And I just don't think the system is as broken as people think it is, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Reverend Brown?
Thank you very much. Mr. President. Members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. And to this logistical group. That came forth to bring this presentation. As you well know, I'm president of the San Francisco NAACP. And all I have to say is. Number one. This is like deja vu. I've been in this town for forty-seven years now. And our main problem is. We must expect. All children to excel. When you expose children or any human being and you spend focused time on the task, you'll come out all right. We got to stop dumbing down expectations. And I have a formula here for you to invite you to consider what I call the Five Star Plan. And that is number one. We got to enlighten the people. Can't go anywhere. In a spin, gaslighting. And I turn the truth. Number two, engagement. Engage the parents and the community that we serve. You can't put in a silo. We got to get rid of this technical arrogance. Wisdom is everywhere. Got to introduce people and particularly the African-American community that has been unfortunately far too long marginalized in the city. Next is empathy. You got to have real love for our children. Running the best for all. Never shouting anyone aside. Next. Number four. Excellence. Excellence. If a task is once begun, never leave it till it's done, be the label, great or small, do it well or not at all. No attempt by promises. And finally. Empowerment. At the end of the day, the outcome ought to be that we have empowered all children to excel in math, to excel in literacy. To excel in common sense and being desires of being in a community. And never being shot, shown to the side and seen as being not of worth. That man who wrote Grapes of Wrath once said. John Steinbeck. I often thought about how many people I just looked at. But I didn't see. I looked at, but I didn't see. We must not look at our children as being objects. And see them as human beings who are worthy of the best in their educational endeavors.
Thank you. That concludes an in-person public comment. We are going to move to a Zoom public comment, so please raise your hand if you care to speak to the eighth grade math goal workshop that was just presented. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Si usted quiere hacer un comentario a través de Zoom acerca de la meta de matemáticas y el taller que se acaba de presentar, por favor levante su mano. If you want to report your findings on the study of mathematics, please raise your hand.
Thank you.
Before we go to public comment, we wanted to dismiss our student delegates. And just again, give a lot of appreciation for your service and commitment to the district and the district students and families.
Yes, student French.
Okay, Rianda. Before we go, we do currently have eleven hands raised. And so I think we'll give a minute of peace to everyone and then we'll, we'll stop after.
Thank you, President Bogus, okay. Rianda?
So, good evening again, Board Commissioners and Superintendent Wayne and everybody in the dais. I thank you for this presentation. I want to stand in support of the students. And making sure that we're giving the students the options that they need, right? Because we don't want to limit our students, you know, differentiation of instruction is very important. And so are offerings. And so we don't want to, in a sense, handicap our students and not allow them to reach their full potentials. If our students are ready for algebra, then that should be an option to them. If our students are struggling, then they should be able to have, you know, the supports that are necessary. But putting a blanket on it, I don't believe is working any longer. Because we are stifling some of our students and they're not able to go as far as they want to go. Like the gentleman said, calculus may or may not apply to people depending on what they're going to college for. But if they are a math major or some major that requires calculus as a prerequisite, then we want to make sure that we are preparing our students to be ready for whatever it is that they want to do, right?
Thank you, that's time.
Okay, thank you.
Diva?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Shivraj, I'm a parent of two kids in SFUSD. And I'm calling in to advocate for bringing algebra back, Algebra One back to eighth graders as an option. You know, we've, since we shifted to offering algebra in ninth grade, I think the data is clear that we are trying to compress five years of advanced math into four and that's not actually working out. So my oldest kid is in, is a junior and he's having to do the compressed class and it's the toughest course he is doing and it's already a tough year. So it's putting more obstacles in our children's journey to actually achieving the life and the career that they want for themselves. So it doesn't surprise me therefore to see the Stanford studies show that enrollment in AP Calculus is trapped, it's dropped across everywhere. And it's especially dropped for non-white student populations, exactly the student populations that have historically for hundreds of years been denied access to these opportunities. And here we are in San Francisco of all places, pushing through a policy that has achieved the same outcome that we wanted reverse. So equity is, there is no trade-off between equity and excellence. Helping every kid excel is the foundation of equity. We want to help every kid find the path.
Thank you.
That is responsible for their life. Thank you.
Autumn?
All right, have you got me?
Yes.
Awesome. So I'm Autumn Lyan and I'm representing SF Guardians and the nearly nine thousand people who stand in support of our work. I am not here to make demands. I'm here first to thank you for considering changing our math pathways, which ask our kids to learn five years of advanced math in just four years. And that isn't working for a lot of kids. We've gone out to the street to collect some signatures for this just as a test. And I have to say, this is the most popular issue we've ever worked on. It's extremely popular on the street with people who are not connected with school system and with people who have any connection to the school system. They're overwhelmingly in favor of having algebra available in eighth grade for kids who want it. Our online petition got two thousand two hundred and thirty-three signatures in favor of eighth grade algebra in just a few weeks. We sent that to you earlier today. So here are our requests. One, we would like to see algebra in all middle schools by fall of twenty twenty-four. And as part of that, we would of course like to see strong support for kids in the early years so that they can access that. Number two, we'd like you to have a conversation with the community to figure out how we can bring some sort of access to eighth grade algebra this fall. Whether that's a pilot program, an elective, after-school programs, but something to get access to those kids so they don't have to wait another year to get the education they need. And the third request is to vote.
Thank you. Vanessa?
Hi, this is Vanessa, the Executive Director of Parents of Public Schools of San Francisco. I first want to thank, special shout out to Sarah Liebert, who is the principal of John Muir, was a teacher for many years. And implemented the program that you all are speaking so highly of and ensured its sustainability where there are teachers around the district going to her school and finding out ways that they can effectively teach in math. And then the second piece is, I think that the conversation around high school coursework is a, is an important one. And I love to see what our data is for those taking certain courses from a post-secondary standpoint. Where are our students ending up? What are the persistence rates? And how do we make sure that we can evaluate ourselves in a, in a meaningful way to get to persistence later? Thank you.
Thank you. Leanne?
Yes, hi, my name is Leanna Louie and I'm a parent of student of SFUSD. And I'm here to support offering algebra at eighth grade and even at seventh grade. I've had the opportunity to take it when I was at Marina Middle School and it has definitely helped me when I was at Mission High School. And also helped me in, in life in general. So I'm hoping that the students will get the opportunity to learn as, as early as they can. I've known some geniuses and geniuses of all colors, of all races that could learn even before seventh grade algebra. So please make that available for those students who accelerate and can do better. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Tony?
Good evening again, my name is Tony Hines and I'm an APAC parent leader. I love to see our students get algebra concepts even before the eighth grade. They can get the concepts in third grade. It isn't about taking math. Algebra and other math classes help you with critical thinking. This is a world-class city with a lot of billionaires and none of that money seems to trickle down to black children and families. Yes, some black children are doing very well, some are doing okay. But a large amount of black children just are not succeeding in math. So please, I appreciate the audit, it had a lot of good ideas. Let's just buckle down and remember, children are our future, let's act like it is. Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you. Delia Miller?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, my name is Delia, I'm a senior at Daily High School. And I just want to say for the math pathways for high schoolers at my school, we go through a pathway where you automatically start at Algebra One. And then depending on if you want to go up to a higher level, higher level of math, like Algebra Two honors, you can actually double up on Algebra Two and geometry and then so forth. Go up higher, which at my school, I fulfilled my CSU requirements and my UC requirements easily. So I just don't get why that isn't implemented at SFUSD. I'm a black scholar, I've been on SFUSD's honor roll for the past seven years in my high school experience. So I expect nonetheless from you guys, thank you.
Thank you. Erin?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you, my name is Erin, I work with Delia, who just spoke to Delia Miller at Parents of Public Schools of San Francisco. And I am a student, I am a disabled woman who is blind. And when I was in high school in Palo Alto Unified School District, we, I was not ever informed of this process and how you need to be thinking about math from the very beginning. So I would love that everybody would include, you know, inform everybody, no matter their disability, their cultural background. We need to know that these are expectations put on us so that we can go into secondary education prepared for the degree we want to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I would just like to say that as the parent of a seventh grader at Presidio Middle School, that I support the reintegration of algebra into the curriculum for seventh and eighth graders. I also wanted to say that most importantly, we need to lift all students up and, you know, support all students across the school district. And then I, earlier, the speakers were talking about the plan of attack and different types of tools. I wanted to suggest that the school district leaders take a look at what the superintendent of the New York City School District announced last week where previously they had been banning ChatGPT. But now have decided to embrace it as a learning amplifier and tool for education. That's a million students in New York City across all demographics that are going to have access to a powerful tool. I'd like to ask the district leaders to consider a proactive, solution-oriented approach that makes use of this kind of tool in the best possible way for all students and their educational outcome versus a reactive punitive approach for using this kind of tool in schools. I guarantee students across the district are using this kind of tool already.
Thank you.
And we need to get in front of it, thank you.
Jen?
Hi, my name is Jennifer and I'm a parent of two kids in SFUSD and a former SFUSD educator. I want to know what the point of doing an audit is if you say you're going to change everything anyway, no matter what the outcome of the audit is. There was a lot of talk today from commissioners about how important it is to make sure teachers get time and resources to improve their teaching and the importance of systematizing practices. The elementary SFUSD math curriculum was actually part of a research study by Northwestern. And the study found that the curriculum and PD was solid. And the study found that the curriculum in PD was solid, but the implementation across schools was spotty because there's no district-wide systems of support to ensure that the implementation was consistent. John Muir has amazing results because their teachers are supported to spend tons of time learning together. But this plan that was discussed tonight doesn't focus on PD and implementation. I want to thank the teachers for really speaking out today about what it really takes to change practices and outcomes. And also what it really looks like to have detract, desegregated high school math classes where students really understand math and have multiple options for acceleration.
Thank you.
This, thank you.
Alex Wong? Alex?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alex. I'm a new public school parent with a daughter starting in August. I'm calling for SFUSD to immediately implement the new K A math curriculum. I was pardoned by Superintendent Matt Wayne's comments that the current approach to math isn't working. If we need to change it, then let's do it sooner. We don't need to pilot methodologies that we already know work. The district overall is doing well on math, so let's just make sure that every student is reaching their full potential. That means making sure that the means and methods to improve math, including making eighth grade algebra possible. All of these means need to be fully and properly funded. Thank you.
Thank you. President Bogus, that concludes the public comment. That was a lot for tonight.
Okay, I think with that, we will close out of public comment and I'll ask commissioners if we can return to our normal seats to finish out our the rest of our agenda. Thank you so much again to staff for the presentation and the public for your comments and your guidance on the process. Definitely heard that and it was received. At this point, we will move to our next item, which is item H, employee contracts for district executive employees. I'm going to call for a motion in a second and I'm going to pass it off to the superintendent. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. And we are approaching almost our final hiring recommendations. And just as a reminder, for these positions that require a contract, the Board of Education first announces the action that will be taken. And the board is designee, and so I'm going to turn it over to Manuel Martinez to share the action that will be taken.
Thank you. I'm going to read the following statement and then if there's any questions, please let us know. The Board will consider approving employment agreements that will commence on July 1st, 2023 and run through June 30th, 2024 with the following placement on the management salary schedule for the following employees. Ronnie Machado, Director, Arts Department, Grade Three, Step Eight. Mary Alasalde, Interim Director, State and Federal, Grade Three, Step Seven. Ruby Nie, Executive Director, Middle School, Grade Four, Step Eight. Tara Hobson, Executive Director, High Schools, Grade Four, Step Two. Tony Payne, Executive Director, High Schools, Grade Four, Step Eight. Eric Guthertz, Assistant Superintendent, Student and Family Services, Grade Six, Step Three. The Board will consider approving employment agreements that will commence on July 1st, 2023 and run through June 30th, 2025 with the placement on the management salary schedule for the following employees. Carleen Aguera-Fort, Associate Superintendent, Educational Services, Grade Eight, Step Seven. Amy Bear, Associate Superintendent, Educational Services, Grade Eight, Step Seven. Dawn Kamalan Non-Thun, Associate Superintendent Operations, Grade Eight, Step Seven. That concludes my readout.
Thank you so much for that. And at this time, we will see if there are any comments from board members or the superintendent. Seeing none, we will see if there is any public comment on this item before voting.
Thank you, President Bogus. We do not have any cards for in-person, but if you are on Zoom and care to speak to the employment contracts that were just read out, please raise your hand at this time. And can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Si usted quiere hacer un comentario a través de la plataforma Zoom, en cuanto a los contratos de los empleados, por favor levante su mano en este momento. Gracias.
If you are on Zoom, but you want to follow an employee agreement, please state your opinion on it. You can already say it.
Thank you. England?
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Can we have a roll call vote on this side?
Thank you on the employment contracts. Commissioner Alexander? Yes. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Bogus?
Yes.
Seven of us.
Thank you so much. And with that, we will go to item I, which are our informational items, which are attached to board docs with questions and answers regarding the agenda items for today. And with that, the board is going to recess into closed session. We will return and adjourn and report out any business or actions that we might take. And with that, we will recess into closed session. I know. Hey, the board reconvenes to open session at ten thirty-two on Tuesday, May twenty-third. There is nothing to report out from our closed session. No action items were, no action items were taken. And with that, we will recess our board meeting at ten thirty-two. I'm sorry, we will adjourn our board meeting at ten thirty-two and we are adjourned.
Thank you, Judge.